Good evening. I'd like to open the planning board meeting. It's our 10th meeting of fiscal year 2019. I'm Cheryl Taggias, the chair.
Denny Swenson, member.
Rich Beeler, member.
Julia Getman, clerk.
William Clark, Planning Director.
April Anderson, member. April Lammerow, member, sorry.[30.72][30.72](Laughter).
I was going to ask if you had a change of status there.
Well, April Anderson, Lammerow.[37.22][37.22](Laughter).
Okay. So Brian will be joining us at about 7:30, he informed me. So I told him we would take a look at the business that wasn't public hearing until he gets here. So we'll go over our next meeting dates are December 13th, January 3rd, and January 10th. Julia has sent us, we have three sets of meeting minutes that I will admit I can't recall if I've reviewed, but April, you were going to look.
I'm trying to pull them up, I can't find them in the Dropbox. What's the folder called?
It's past meetings, November 9th.
Okay, so given that.
I don't even see the folder.
I would suggest that we defer the approval of the minutes to our next meeting.
Where's the, which folder are they in? This is our Dropbox.
I think this is it, though.
What folder is it?
I'm not looking at the folders.
Oh, it's an email.
What kind of email?
Oh, okay.
Okay, so are all in agreement that we'll defer the approval of the minutes until our December 13th meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so next on our agenda is Citizen Speak. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board on a topic that's not on our agenda tonight? I'm seeing none, okay. Old business, 333 Brushhill Road Site Plan Decision. We learned today that they're not ready for us, so we will defer that until the December 13th meeting as well. John Flynn and Kevin Freitag, Town Counsel, are unavailable tonight as well.
On 3/33.
Do you see it, Julia?
Sorry?
Are you going through the link that Lauren sent?
I'm sorry. I thought of something as I was putting the bullet list together, my homework from last meeting.
Okay.
And during our public hearing, a condominium owner asked that something be done, I'm sorry, no, he asked about the square footage of the condo units, and that was going to get deferred to Joe Prondak. Do you remember that issue came up?
It did come up.
And then, so how is that resolved? Should we inform Mike Dennehy or Joe Prondak that that issue arose?
There was some, I think there was some discussion about, yeah, so it was a difference, the attorney had a different idea about it, right?
It's a difference of gross square foot of livable space versus, livable versus gross square foot. And he's allowed 3,500 of livable space. What Mr. Sherman was.
You need to be on the.
What Mr. Sherman was talking about was gross square footage. He included the garage, he included the deck, the front porch, outside spaces too. So it wasn't just the usable space in the house.
But the way the Realtor advertised it was the same way that Sherman, and the same way that the deed came out. So I'm not, I don't think this is our area, but I just want to be sure it goes to the right area.
It's recorded at the Registry of Deeds as a building of, just as our permit says. And that's what.
Not what Sherman said. Sherman said it wasn't.
That's what Joe Prondak has been signing off on.
All right, so, so Denny, I guess, you know, if you have questions about it further, if you want to reach out to Joe directly, I mean, I think you could do that to get a clarification. But it sounds like what in Bill's, you had a conversation with Joe?
Yep.
And so your understanding is that they are in compliance with the permit per Joe?
Per Joe.
Okay.
Well, I guess if that conversation happened, I don't know that I need to, right?
Okay, so the other thing we could do.
The same issue did go to Kevin Freitag, so Town Counsel has the same thing.
Okay.
So I guess if you want something for the record, you could ask for an email from Joe Prondak, and we can put that in the file.
Okay.
Can you ask Joe for that, Bill? Okay.
That's great, thank you. I just wanted to close the loop.
Thank you for the reminder.
I'm having a technical issue here.
Lauren had a technical issue the other night as well. So under new business, the Forest Street A&R, is that really old business?
Which one?
Didn't we already approve the Forest Street A&R, and we just need to sign the MyLars?
This is a.
Is this a new application?
This is a new one in that.
Hello, Brian.
Hello.
They need, you know something Ned's the lawyer. I'll let Ned explain it.
Well, yeah, we have a few minutes still before 7:15.
They're looking to redo the boundary, that they're going to buy another piece of land. This whole piece will belong to the Cashmans. They're going to buy this piece here. It enlarges their building footprint.
But that is the same property that we already.
You already signed it once.
Right, okay.
I'm representing a buyer of the lots that waiting to close, they were hoping to do a single closing as opposed to simultaneous closing.
Ned, you know the rules.
Ned, sorry. So you previously approved Lot A, it still has to get Land Court approval because it's a Land Court property, has to go through the Land Court approval process for the plan. And he had always wanted to, my buyers had always wanted to acquire what's shown as this Lot C, because they want to put a barn on the rear of the property. And so they agreed to sell this additional area. It's not a buildable lot per se, but it can be combined with Lot A and create new lot area. It's Land Court, so it has to be done, I think, simultaneously. The seller's responsible for doing that, but that's, that's what I understand is happening.
So you understand that we need to take action simultaneous with Land Court, is that what, no, before Land Court, after Land Court?
I understand, but.
Before.
Before Land Court, right.
Okay, so, Bill, you're trying to get that plan up on the screen?
I didn't know she had a problem.
She did get it eventually, but I don't know what the precise problem was or what the fix was. Do we have copies, hard copies?
You did.
Do we have the application?
Did what?
Do we have an application?
Yes, you. You did, you got it.
I know it's in the Dropbox folder, but did we get hard copies? We did get them.
You got them like a month ago.
Yeah, some time ago, right?
Looks like the date, the date of the plan is October 28.
I don't think I brought it.
Yeah, I didn't, I printed out everything in the Dropbox.
What's the address?
For today's, Forest Street.
Forest Street A&R.
So you have the plan, one, just one copy of the plan with you, Bill? All right, why don't we come back to it while you make copies, Julia, okay? All right, so we are at 7:15, and how did we end up with two, right at 7:15? I don't recall.
You, at your last meeting, told Milton Marketplace to come back.
At the time that I already had booked?
Yep.
All right, so I think the Marketplace won't take as long as the Walcott Woods, so I'd like to have the Marketplace be our next agenda item, and we'll come back, Ned.
Could I just say one thing? I'm happy with that order. I did notice that we have some Historic Commission members here who may think that we're going to be working on historic topic for Walcott Woods, and if we're working on traffic and not working on Historic Committee, I didn't want them to have to sit through the entire.
That's true. We are going to talk about the schedule when we get to Walcott Woods, but that schedule, which is in our packets that were given to us tonight, Lauren put together based upon our discussion at the last meeting. So Walcott Woods, the staff review, traffic, and confirming future schedule is tonight. And then on December 13th would be utilities, storm, water, and roadway design. And then January 3rd would be site planning and architecture and historic preservation. Right now it's identified as a lesser topic on the 10th, because that's the day that we will have the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel presentation. And then on January 24th, the construction management and tree preservation. So those are subject to change a bit if we need to, but we were trying to outline a schedule so that the applicant could have their consultants here, the appropriate ones, so they don't have to bring the whole team every meeting, and that also that we could notify the appropriate either department or committee or commission for those meetings. So, sorry about that. I see we do have Historical Commission here. What we are going to do, though, if you're interested in that part of the staff review, is just, the staff will give us an overview of their review of the entire application, but we won't go into any detail on the historical tonight.
January 3rd is when we have.
Historical.
Historic.
Does that work for you, January 3rd? I'd hate to have you come all the way back, but thank you.
And I'm sorry that we didn't get that communicated in advance, so that you had to come here for tonight. Thank you, Denny, for bringing that up.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll do Milton Marketplace. And thank you for coming back.
Are you all set?
Well, we're gonna.
We need an application.
Yeah, you're going to be here, so.
Welcome back, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you for having us and calling us. I think when we were last here, November 8th, through the chair, there was a request made for additional information about acoustics and a suggestion made that we should consult with an acoustical expert. We have done that, we have a report from McCritchie Engineering that we've supplied, and I've brought in the consulting engineer Bruce McCritchie here that could probably better explain what's going on over there than I can. I know that they've installed two monitoring stations on the roof as of this week to try to determine decibel levels going forward, and the idea is to create a baseline sound data to establish a criteria, the goal of which is not to exceed with the proposed addition. In other words, no more noise than is already there. So I know one of the things they're doing is trying to determine the decibel level of the existing equipment on the roof, and it's a five-day process, so they're in the middle of doing that right now, and it really wasn't fair to do it one day, we've got to do it over a period of time. We couldn't do it over Thanksgiving because there was a lot of usage going on. So I'll let Mr. McCritchie explain his findings.
Sure. Basically, the design is in its infancy, it's a preliminary design at this point. The major improvement to the existing system is that the roof-mounted equipment will be inside a barrier. Basically, there's going to be a fake man-side roof built around the perimeter of the new addition on the roof. It will, it's going to be approximately five feet high, which is about the same height as the maximum height of the equipment on the roof. Things may be adjusted a little bit. It provides both a vision screen and an acoustical barrier. In speaking to the acoustical engineer that we're dealing with at Ascentech, he was confident that the, the new, the, the features that will be building into the new equipment will be quieter than the old equipment, and we'll have it inside this barrier so that we will not be creating any more noise that already exists. One of the things that I've suggested that the owners agreed to is that there's three condensing units, I think it's three condensing units, on the ground, in the back of the building, not part of the project, and we're making provisions so that as that equipment fails, we can put it up on the roof inside the barrier, and again, further improve the situation. I know you also had questions about the pollution control equipment that's going to be on the roof. Currently, there is a prep kitchen with a kitchen hood, an exhaust fan on the roof. Typical kitchen exhaust fan, it exhaust fumes vertically away from the roof surface. The grease filters that are in a typical kitchen exhaust hood are about 90% efficient, which means that about 10% of the grease gets beyond the filters, gets into the duct work, duct work needs to be cleaned. If it doesn't stick to the duct work, it's just blowing out into the neighborhood. The pollution control equipment that's being added, or is replacing the system that's there, basically takes this air that's gone through the grease filters on the hood, removes the remaining grease from the air. In this case, we're going to have a multi-stage filter on the roof that removes the grease, and once the grease is removed, the air will be going through an activated charcoal filter. The activated charcoal filter absorbs odor, so if somebody's cooking with garlic, you don't get the garlic smells going into the neighborhood. Prior to this, there was nothing to kill the smells that would be generated from the cooking process. There's certain smells that the nose picks up immediately, bacon, you know, a few pots per million, you can pick it up, other things you don't smell at all. The activated charcoal is very effective at removing all of them. It's very often used in certain treatment plants to get rid of smells, so.
So I think one of the questions we had related to that was, how common is this in terms of, you know, other, whether it's food preparation for a restaurant or a retail establishment such as this? Is this a common application of the technology? And, you know, how effective has it been in those other applications?
The most common thing is to just exhaust everything to the atmosphere. When a restaurant's installed adjacent to a residential neighborhood, or we were dealing with a restaurant in Rose Wolf that was at the street level, the discharge was right at a walkway between, it goes out to the ferries, and they put in pollution control equipment. That pollution control equipment went inside the building and included basically a scrubber, an air wash, a water spray that took the grease out of the air, and that only can be used indoors. We've got this equipment on the roof, and they'll be using a different type of grease filter. The activated charcoal filter would be the same, and it does kill the smells.
Okay, and, Rich?
You can finish it up.
And I think you addressed here on the maintenance, which was another question we had in terms of the filtering system, you know, how often it needed to be maintained. I think you put that in the letter, is that right?
Yeah, I did write the letter, and I did put that in. You know, the amount of grease, the amount of smells that are generated and so forth, really depends on what you're cooking and the types of appliances. High heat, basically, if you take the kitchen appliances, the cooking equipment, you can break it down into three basic categories. High heat appliances, which produce a lot of heat, fryolators, char broilers, and so forth, and they can produce a lot of grease. Low heat appliances would be things like convection ovens and cooking kettles that really don't produce a lot of grease. It's more really heat that you're trying to dissipate. And then the middle range would be, you know, a grill or a range top, you know, and, but, and so I'm not sure exactly what they have, what they're going to have at the Milton Marketplace, but if you're producing a lot of smells, the filters are going to have to be changed more frequently, more grease. If it's, you know, Wes, I mean, you know, is it going to be a salad bar or a steakhouse, you know?
So as far as that's concerned, then, in terms of the marketplace knowing how to sort of manage their equipment, is there some kind of like inspection plan or something that typically would come with that?
Typically, what would be done is that the activated charcoal filters, basically, it's a chemical reaction that happens with the activated charcoal, and odors are absorbed, and the filter actually gains weight. A particular filter removing dirt from the air, basically, you increase the pressure drop across the filter. That doesn't happen with an activated charcoal. With activated charcoal, it's actually starts absorbing the odors, and you can actually take a sample of the charcoal granules, send it back to the vendor, they can analyze it and tell you that the filter's, you know, 50% used, 30% used, 80% used, and give you a forecast of how much life is left in the hood. I think once the owner starts using it and seeing it, they're going to find that they need to change the filters three times a year, twice a year, once a month. It really is going to depend on the activity and the types of things they're cooking.
Rich?
Just a couple of questions, but they might, I mean, we might not be able to answer them now, but just a couple of thoughts I was having about this. And I don't know if we could even answer this one now, but I don't know if the other restaurants in East Milton Square have those charcoal filters. It'd be nice to find out, because I do know that in that area, people complain every so often about different smells, and what I've heard is it's, well, they must need to clean the filters or change the filters. And so it sounds like that, and so I did read in your write-up that over a year or so that you're going to kind of test it and see what the right interval is.
Right.
I think I asked this question once before. I mean, I don't know if this is appropriate, but it would be nice to see. So that's an ongoing issue in that area, that every few months you start smelling the restaurants, and then you got to kind of call and complain, and then something happens. And so it'd be nice to see, or does, is it appropriate to see some sort of schedules built into these, or some sort of timeline, that what you just outlined, that there's going to be a timeline, maybe like what the timeline is and that it actually sticks to it, sort of thing. Not saying that it wouldn't, I'm just saying it gives me more comfort in knowing that something's going to happen, and once that happens, something gets built, and a schedule gets.
So what we could do in our decision is to put, you know, stipulations in, so that perhaps the marketplace would have to report to the building department, you know, let's say twice a year or something, with whatever inspections they've done and the status of that. And at least then they know what's expected of them, and the building department would know too.
Most restaurants do not have pollution control equipment.
Yeah.
And they just release the extra 10% of the grease to the atmosphere.
Yep.
You know, by code, kitchen grease exhaust duct work is supposed to be cleaned on a regular basis. Access doors are put in for that purpose. If you have a grease fire, the grease gets to be, can get to about 1,800 degrees and becomes liquid and flows. The access doors should not be in the bottom of the duct work, they should be on the side of the duct work so that, you know, you don't get, you know.
So then, so with that said, does it mean, do you mean that if it's not the duct work on one without the filter, if it's not cleaned properly, then that would cause more smells, or?
Well, I don't think you can equate the grease with the smell.
Oh, okay.
It's two different, two different things. The grease exhaust duct work, the grease, the grease exhaust duct work is designed to be cleaned on a frequent basis, and most restaurants do it, find that they do it once a month, once every two months. It really depends on the nature of the restaurant. Are they making sandwiches, are they, you know, selling french fries and onion rings? You know, it really depends on that sort of activity. But I think that, you know, once they get a sense of how often they have to change filters, you know, I advise people, you know, if you live in the country, you know, if you change the filters in March, as soon as the pollen season, it's going to get, they're going to get plugged, you know, so you change them, don't change them too early, wait until the pollen season's over and then change the filters, yeah?
This will be interesting, I think, to see if there isn't a requirement in other restaurants and there is problems, and then this seems to work, then perhaps we should be looking at this in other restaurants.
Right, well.
In the future.
Yeah, I mean, I was not on the board when the permit was granted for a couple of the restaurants that are in East Milton Square, so I don't know what the decisions they made then, but I do think, you know, this is something that the public came and commented to us on, that they weren't opposed to this application, but they did want to make sure that odor and noise were addressed, and so that's why we're addressing it, you know, with this, and as the bylaws, you know, allow us to. So on the, any other questions about the odor? Because I do have a question about the equipment overall.
No question.
Brian? No. I'm sorry, Denny, go ahead, yes.
I'm sorry. I was curious, when you, you had mentioned in time you'd move some equipment from ground level to above the roof, and I was wondering, how does that work? Do smells carry?
The equipment that would be moved is refrigeration equipment, the heat, equipment that's rejecting heat from the building.
Okay.
And it's a condensing unit, if you have a central air conditioning.
It's sound.
If you, it's sound.
Sound, yeah. Okay, so sound, well, sound would be muffled by the.
By the enclosure.
By the enclosure on the roof.
Correct.
Okay, because it's now being muffled by the landscape.
Right now, it's not. Perhaps landscaping, perhaps.
Yeah, perhaps.
There will be acoustical shrouds around the compressors and anything on the roof.
Okay. So it would, so in your estimation, this would be an improvement to sound level?
I can't imagine it wouldn't get a lot better than it is now. The equipment we have now is old.
Okay.
We do nothing now for sound of any kind, so with the equipment, the way it's made now and designed now, and with these additional.
Measures?
Measures, I can't imagine it wouldn't be dramatically quieter. Obviously, the goal is to do that, it wouldn't be any noisier, that's for sure.
Okay, good.
Two examples. We did a renovation five years ago or so at the Wellesley Town Hall. They had a chiller inside the building, a condensing unit outside. The mechanical room was very tight. We put a packaged piece of equipment outside to boost the chilled water, and we spoke to an acoustical consultant, like we're doing here. We made some, this packaged chiller had six condenser fans, and instead of having them start all at once, and you hear the fans starting and stopping and so forth, we tied them all together and tied them into a variable speed control, so they all started at very low speed, they ramped up, they ramped down, and you just didn't hear the noise. We put the acoustical shrouds around the compressors. We also made provisions for an acoustical fence. Now, this, when you have a piece of air conditioning equipment, you can put a vision screen around it so you don't see it, and, or you can put an acoustical fence around it. The acoustical fence is a double-wall fence filled with an acoustical, sound-absorbing material, it goes all the way down to the concrete pad that the piece of equipment's sitting on. When you have a packaged chiller or a condenser, the air comes into the side of the condenser, is discharged vertically through the fans, and with a vision screen, you can put openings in the screen, you have slats that are, but air can pass through this fence, if you will. With an acoustical fence, you don't want that because you don't want the noise penetrating it, and the whole idea is to drive the noise up in a conical shape away from the ground and away from people that are going to hear it. At the Wellesley Town Hall, we put in this oversized pad because we have to allow for the air now to come in down through, down from the outside, then into the condensing unit, and then be discharged up. And so instead of having, say, three feet of clearances beyond the chiller to put the, a vision screen, we had five feet, so the pad was bigger. The thing was so quiet, broadly speaking, the acoustical fence never went in. We did the same thing at Stetson Town Hall, the old Stetson Town Hall, which is the former town hall in Randolph. We did a renovation there. Again, the chiller went on the ground, you know, pitched roof, not designed to have equipment go on the roof. Same thing, same criteria, and they ended up not putting the fence in, it was quiet, so quiet. So I feel confident that, you know, if you have problems, it's not going to be from the noise of the mechanical equipment.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, I wanted to clarify, you said when you started that this was preliminary in design, however, you've submitted documents to us representing that these are, this is the equipment, at least in type and in function, not necessarily in brand.
Correct.
So I want to be clear that with our approval, that would be our expectation, that if you were going to have a change in function of any manner, that we'd expect you to come back to us if the. back to us if the design advanced to a level that changed that.
That's fine. I mean, we've submitted on carrier equipment. There was a contractor that's been pricing the job, and he intends to use carrier equipment. York Train makes all comparable equipment. We wouldn't be looking to bait and switch.
Understood that you want to stay competitive, and that's perfectly fine. It's just the question of the features and their function that we want to make sure gets retained going forward.
I understand.
Okay. So do, does anybody else on the board have any questions? Is there anybody in the audience who has any questions or would like to talk to us about this? Okay, then I'd like to suggest that we say that we have received enough information and close the public hearing on this. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I'd like to suggest that we approve the application, that we will put some conditions on it, you know, the information that's still in process, primarily being acoustical. I think it makes sense that you do your testing, you put the equipment in, you test it again, and if it's meeting the requirements, then additional measures wouldn't be necessary. But for that, we'd want you to report to the building commissioner, just as we would with your kind of a maintenance plan. So, you know, that is something I think we could just put in our decision as well. Is there anything else, anyone else can think of with the, we would do that? Okay. So then I'll take a motion. I'm looking to Brian because he's so good at giving us the motions.
I move that we, well, I have a question, actually. So site plan approval, conditions on site plan approval, Bill?
He told me we could, that's what, before I said it, I already asked, yes.
And who's writing the decision? Just curious.
Bill, do you think staff can write the decision on this?
Okay, great. So I move that we approve the site plan application for Milton Marketplace, Timbassett Street, as submitted, with the information provided on acoustic information and filtration for smells, subject to review of the draft to be prepared by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to Walcott Woods, continuation of the special permit application. Ned, you're going to be coming forward, right, for Walcott Woods?
Yes.
Before you get started, I'd like to make a few comments, which hopefully folks appreciate a little background on this. This is a significant project, so I want to make sure people understand the process. There may have been some confusion at, when we got started with this, because we were looking at the model, et cetera. But the board opened the public hearing for the special permit application at our meeting on November 1st, after a determination by planning staff that the application was complete, and after peer reviews had been conducted, independent peer reviews had been conducted for stormwater and traffic. And then at that meeting, the applicant provided an overview of the project, which was a fairly general overview. And they also described to us what process they had been through before coming to us in terms of meeting with neighbors and meeting with town department and other commissions, such as the historical commission. Our meeting on the 8th, I apologize, we had a lengthy agenda, and we got to you very late, and so we really didn't get much, make much progress at that meeting. We have cleared some things from the board's workload, so we're hoping to be able to move forward at a reasonable pace here. So just as I said earlier, in terms of when we talked about whether the historical commission needed to be here, since this, there are lots of aspects to this project, we're not able to tackle them all in one meeting, and it's better to focus our attention on particular topics. So tonight is going to be focused on a staff review for compliance with the zoning, as well as with our rule, the planning board's rules and regulations. That Bill Clark will give us an overview, and he will also, he has provided us some written documentation from the health department and the town engineer from the Department of Public Works. In the, we will also have a discussion of the traffic study, including the peer, independent peer review. And then, and now that we have the applicant here, we will also confirm what we talked about earlier in terms of future meetings. So again, I want to reiterate that this, the special permit hearings can take multiple meetings, and they can take weeks or months, depending upon how complex the application is, how can, whether the board feels as if there needs to be alterations to the plans, or whether we like additional information. And so it may be that it will take us some time to get through all of that work. Another thing that's important is we are interested in public input. So comments can be submitted in writing anytime prior to the closing of the public hearing, and that would go to the planning department staff, either in a letter or in an email. And then at our meetings, we're happy to take verbal comments and questions. We may not address them at the time of the meeting, but the notes will be taken and they will be addressed at some point during this process. So once we feel as if we've received and asked for and have heard all of the comments, we will close the public hearing, and no new information can be submitted at that point. The board will then deliberate and will either approve the application with conditions or will deny it. We can deny it only if it does not meet the zoning or doesn't comply with the standards in a way that we feel is egregious and not in the best of public interests. So when we're doing those deliberations, interested parties are welcome to attend and listen, but may not make further comments. So we're a long way from closing the public hearing, but I just wanted to lay out the process. Our decision, once we take a vote, it's filed with the town clerk by the decision deadline. This special permit to be favorable needs four out of the five members to vote in support. Okay. So with that, we're going to go with staff first, okay? Is that all right with you, Ned?
That's fine.
Okay. Bill?
We have a bit of a technical issue with the wire that connects up here, so. After a comprehensive review of the application materials submitted by Walcott Residential LLC, I deem that the application to be complete. All components of the Greater Estates PUD special permit have been addressed by the application package. It is the discretion of the planning board to determine the adequacy of the application materials provided. The following items have been flagged for further comment. Now, I gave you a 11 by 17 with each one of this, each one of the sections and subsections of the zoning in telling you whether it is addressed adequately or if there's going to be some review required by, there's one in here for DPW, there's another one for Board of Health, there's another historic commission, and then there are some pieces in here that talk about waivers. We can go through each one, and I'll take them from the ones that don't have the X but have the yellow piece that have a discussion point about them. Under streets.
So Bill, I'm sorry, can I just, this is based on zoning?
That is the zoning.
The zoning.
In the packet that you got tonight, in the packet that is in Dropbox, we took the section that is special permit number 19, Greater Estates Planned Unit Development. It relates to Section 3, Subsection Q. You have a copy of it. I gave you one tonight. I know I gave you one at the beginning of this process, and if I'm not mistaken, there's also one inside the binder itself. There is a lot of discussion that goes on over some of these sections. When we talk about streets, the review for the town would be that that would come under the Department of Public Works slash the Engineering Department, and it's their review. They have given us a comment that we can get to in a few minutes, but their piece is, their review is based on their perception of what the zoning is. It talks about the purpose of a cluster, the definition of a cluster development, and it talks about the same in the, in the Greater Estates PUD. At the same time, there's a lot of discussion in our zoning that says that this board can grant a waiver to the subdivision rules and regs. Well, that becomes subjective to the point that when you plan a subdivision, you plan for a 50-foot right-of-way for the road. You also plan for a 24, 24 feet of pavement, and it is going to be something that is going to be town-owned. So the standards become rigid because we have to pay for them in the future. In a, in a planned unit development for Great Woods, Greater Estates, the issue here is one of, they're trying to maintain the topography that's there, they're trying to lessen the cuts and fills that are required. They're trying to preserve open space and the vistas. Well, to do that, you don't want to take and lay out a 50-foot right-of-way. So what they've done is they have allowed for, they have asked for a waiver to allow for narrower roadways. They have asked for permission to change the view of vertical granite curbing to Cape Cod Burn. They've asked to allow something that's a little bit different in the height of the steepness of the grades going through the development. It's not something that hasn't been done before. We use Beechwood Lane as an example. The grade there is 12%. And we're not looking for anything in that range, but at the same time, it is something that has been done, and we could go and point all over town for projects that have actually been accepted, public roads, that we've allowed that to happen, too. And that's in the, in the letter that I believe is in your packet, is also given to you in Dropbox from John Thompson today.
So that's item five on this large spreadsheet, right?
We can come back and do more in that in a bit. Setbacks and heights. New townhouse units shall not be constructed less than 550 feet from an existing road, provided that one or two new townhouse units designed for the appearance of a stable or carriage house in the traditional style incited to create a grouping with the condominium unit or units in the existing house of similar style, totaling no more than three units. So to give a unified and coherent traditional appearance to such groupings may be approved. Well, there are units within 550 feet of Cowberry Lane. We flagged it. It needs to be addressed. The applicant has been notified, and it will be addressed during the public hearing process. Come on.
Do you need this, Bill?
No, I have my sheet here. The affordable units. The application addresses a plan for affordable units. They need to be further addressed by the planning board. The applicant agrees to provision for off-site units. There is one thing that the planning department does not recommend, the option for payment in lieu of units, which is allowed by the zoning, but that's our, one of our few opinion pieces in here.
So that's eight, eight D.
Number nine.
J.
All right, eight.
Page 2J.
Page 2J, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Number nine, I mean.
All right, I got it, okay. I'm caught up now.
We're not offering you a lot of opinions, but that's one of our opinions that we are Condominium Association, to be developed during, it's to be developed by the, by the developer. It's something that the board will have input into the, into the documentation that creates that. This board needs to agree with the association's agreement. Because a lot of, a lot of the future maintenance is all controlled by the homeowner association. Cleaning of the stormwater system, plowing the roads, caring for the roads, replacement of the roads, the sewer system that's within the property itself, all of that is taken care of by the homeowner association, so it all needs to be addressed in the homeowner association documentation. Number 13, design standards for buildings. The exterior lighting pole heights need to be discussed. As stated in the application, they're asking to put in 10-foot poles. The board has been known to ask for 12 to 15. The issue that the applicant is looking for is trying to make this look more like a driveway, not call attention to lighting up the area itself. It's more, this is somebody's driveway that you're going up, they're trying to make it less obvious as you drive by on Canton Ave. The historical commission's going to wind up commenting on existing structures. The building is, the building commissioner is responsible for the building codes. So as we go back and we start talking about adding this, adding that, it's up to the building inspector to make sure about the building code issue. And every building needs to be signed off by the building inspector. That's just common practice. Every, every building gets its own review and gets signed off by the building inspector.
Its own building permit?
Yes.
Each structure?
Each structure. The structure may have two units in it, but it gets a building permit.
Its own permit?
Site plan. Stormwater drainage is going to be reviewed by the DPW and the third-party peer review. We have had that done. John Thompson has looked at it. He has made a comment about it. I know that we have StanTech, and I know Walter's here to make comment about the, when we get to drainage, he'll address the drainage issue. The utility plan is being reviewed by the, is being reviewed by the DPW, and the building inspector and I have both spoken about it and think that a third-party inspector should be put into, should be built into the decision. That way, we have somebody that can go onsite, look, make sure that what is being, what was designed, what is, what has been approved is actually what gets built. It's a belt and suspenders to the as-built that are required for each project.
It's the same process that we've just spoken about for 333 Brushover Road, correct?
It is.
And that's what you and the building commissioner and the town engineer are suggesting?
It's the same thing we have for Polte on that project.
Okay.
Landscape plan to be reviewed by the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. There's a, I guess, a discussion to have a third-party arborist look at this, but that's up to the board.
The discussion by whom?
Third-party arborist.
Right, but you said there's been discussion?
Shade Tree Advisory Committee.
Is suggesting that that, that the board requests that?
Yep.
Okay.
Um. The other filing requirements are a traffic impact study. We have a third-party review. The tree study, Shade Tree, and third-party arborist. Number 17, reference to the Board of Health and Conservation Commission. There is a comment in your packet from the Board of Health. They've made a suggestion that sidewalk is fine on one side as long as the sidewalk follows all of the road system. So where there is, in the original application, a walkway on one side that goes up the main road, loops over as it goes to the right, but it doesn't connect to the lariat portion of the property. If you were to take and bring a walkway around, the Board of Health thinks that's a necessary piece. Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions. The order of conditions will be filed with the registry of deeds.
Just correct that the Conservation Commission has issued an ANRAD relative to the delineation of the wetlands.
They didn't do the order of conditions yet?
We have not yet filed the notice of intent, and they have not issued, obviously would not have issued a notice, an order of conditions.
But I know that's a, I know that they've had sidewalks up there. I know they've gone and they've looked at the plans. When they get an order of conditions, we'll attach it to this decision.
So again, for clarification, you haven't yet asked them for that?
We have not yet filed the notice of intent.
Okay, and what's your schedule for that, do you think?
Within the next 30 days, I think.
That means they'll be before the board in January.
Right. We did, we did go through a process with the, with the commission about a year ago to delineate the wetland resource areas. So that's done, but we have not, we have not filed a notice of intent relative to the work that will be done within the buffer area associated with, and obviously they'll have jurisdiction over that.
Okay, so that completes your review of the zoning?
Yes.
So the memo is a summary of the things that are highlighted in, basically in yellow or didn't receive an X in terms of, of your review, right? So there are things, though, that received an X that are subjective, right? So that would be for the board to take a look at, for example, is the building standards and the site plan, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so on the, we have comment about the waivers on the roadways, but I think we, from John Thompson, but I think we'll wait on that until we talk about roadways, right? And also, we could talk about the sidewalks at that time, too. Anybody on the board have questions for Bill relative to the summary?
Got a comment.
Mm-hmm.
I really appreciate this format. Great job for the planning board, planning staff. It's easy to follow. A lot of questions that come up at the last meeting. At some point, it would be good to go through and just highlight what is subjective, but that would be my only suggestion. I think it's well done. I didn't get all the effort that was--
So for the, when we get to those topics, like when we're talking about architecture and planning, maybe just give us, you can even just circle them while we're here, you know, and go over it. I don't think it needs another--
We don't need another graph.
Another hard copy of it, right?
No, I'll--
Okay.
Show you which ones I've highlighted.
Okay. Thank you, Bill, and thank you to Lauren when you talked to her. All right. Now let's move on to traffic. And Ned, I think you, your team has a presentation, right? Yes, please come forward.
Excuse me for a second. This is Jack Dolly from Northline Residential. Before you shift gears, I want to make two clarifying points. Bill said, or town planner said, building permits are issued by building. My history and experience with this type of product, both here and other towns, is that a building permit is issued for each of the units in a building. So if it's a two-unit building, I pull two permits simultaneously for that building and pay two fees, and, and they are reviewed in conjunction when I apply for it, and then they're processed. If plumbing is signed off one week in the left half, they sign off in the right half, so on and so forth, so.
Well, there's, there's two different addresses, basically.
Two different addresses, two different applications, two different fees. But I can't apply for one half of a two-unit building. I have to apply for them simultaneously. And on the NOI, we deliberately not filed the NOI because if the plan shifts, and remember, we filed the plan on September 14th. We've had really one meeting where we said, hi, my name's Jack Dolly. If the plan shifts and we have to change the drawings, we file them and then pull them and then file them and pull them. So 30 days may be aspirational, depending, because we only have one meeting now between now and the end of the next 30-day cycle. So I don't want to mislead the public or you. I want to be, I also want to be transparent as to why we haven't done it.
Okay, so that's a good--
It's not that we don't want to. We just want to know what we're applying for when we go to CONCON.
That actually makes a lot of sense, because every time he has to change that plan and has to go back to CONCON, they have to amend. Therefore, there's another posting that has to get put in the paper. There's another public hearing, and they meet once a month. So if they change their plan and they wind up getting a plan, say they did it in December, we wind up making some kind of decision here. They have to now go back to CONCON, change their plan, which means February. Something else happens at this board, we've just changed their February, it keeps getting pushed and pushed and pushed.
So that's a good, sorry, go ahead.
CONCON knows that these things need to go side by side. So even if they were, if they don't have an order of conditions, by the time this decision is rendered, that decision will be taken into account by CONCON.
All right, so given that, and given that we talked about January 3rd being a site plan and architectural historic preservation, but you also heard, and you've been made aware, that this, the plan has this issue with the 550 feet. Do you anticipate submitting a revised plan to us before the January 3rd meeting?
Sorry, what is the January 3rd?
To address that. It's one we're going, the focus, we talked about the focus being the site planning and the architectural.
Well, as I communicated on the sidewalk, there are sort of a spectrum of options relative to the 550 rule. It's our position that the 550 rule, if you will, and I've nicknamed it that, was intending to apply to 550, 550 feet off of Canton Ave, and was a negotiation with the neighborhood relative to the Devens House and the density of what was around the Devens House, as, as the board may or may not be aware, that the plan for that area did not retain the Devens House and called for, I believe, 10 townhouses. That was negotiated with the Blue Hill, the Brush Hill neighborhood group in such a way to reduce the density of the project overall, shift some of the units from that area, and retain and add only two additionally, retain Devens and, and, and Devens House and add two.
Mr. Dolly, excuse me for one moment. Brian would ask for me to--
Yeah, I just want to ask a quick question before we have to go plunge down the road here. We're having a discussion later about zoning modifications. There's a town meeting in February, right?
Yes.
I was told last night that they haven't made, that at their meeting last night, they did not make a final decision about whether to have one or not. I got a message from Katie Common today.
Well, my question is, and this is a question, I guess, for the planner or the lawyer and the lawyers in the room. If we were to modify that bylaw, would you have to refile?
If you, if, if the board felt it was appropriate from a site planning perspective to clarify the bylaw, to correct what appears to be an inconsistency, I think what the, what in that, in that case, an option would be for the board to approve a partial special permit for 50 units, eliminating, not determining relative to those four, and then we could file for an amendment to the special permit for a new hearing relative to adding those four units back into the plan.
Well, I mean, if that's, it is an issue that was flagged by staff, and I've read this, and I think that it's a legitimate flag, and the solution, we look to you to suggest to us how you'd like--
Right. We have a couple of options available to us that we have considered. If, if the time to speak about that is in early January, whatever that date is you cited, then we can do that.
Well, my only other question is, I'm not sure how we discuss roadway design, especially in that corner of the site, until we resolve this issue. So I'm wondering if those two should be flipped.
I'm not sure that's the case, because the way the zoning is written, it allows, there's no roadway within--
125--
Not going to affect your roads in any way. Even, your proposed solutions for relocating the buildings wouldn't change your roadway path?
Correct.
Okay. Never mind. We can disregard that comment.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking if utilities and stormwater and roadway are really more technical, and so it just, it gives you time.
Time.
If you prefer to switch them for review of--
Frankly, I think the schedule that you've outlined is logical, and I would stay with it.
Okay.
The paper I just gave you is that new, the one that I'm going to make a suggestion that that's the one they use.
The one that I reviewed earlier verbally that we have in our packet? Okay, April?
Has it, have you consulted John Flynn on this 550 issue?
It's pretty clear, but--
I don't know. Sometimes it isn't when it's state law and the intent is different than the written word. It's applied differently.
The, the language here, it says new townhouse units.
Oh, I know what it says, but I'm just saying, I mean, when you have, when you have state legislation that becomes state law, sometimes the intent is a little different than the written word, and there's different ways to interpret that. So I'm wondering if we've gotten our own legal.
We should ask John Flynn, but my concern is if this thing gets a, the only way to resolve that is to go to court. And I think we would like to have as bulletproof a decision as we can on this particular application.
Yeah, I think part of that starts with getting an opinion from our lawyer.
We can certainly ask for an opinion. I think that they should, in the meantime, think about what else they might do.
Correct.
Talking about this, it was just assuming that we have kind of an opinion on, like, which direction we're thinking on that, or is that, when would we talk about that? It's their decision.
It's their, it's their call on how they want to rectify the, what's been flagged as a deficiency in the application. We can seek opinion from council, town council, as April suggested, which is fine, but, yes, Brian?
No, I'm sorry, I was scratching.
But as far as, you know, how they want to modify their plan, you know, in order to conform, we should let them take a look at that and come back to it.
Or do we, I mean, I think they have some suggested paths forward. Did we hear that now?
I mean, do you want to talk about those now? I mean, it's fine if, if the applicant wants to talk about that now.
No, no, I don't think that's--
Okay.
Like my land planner, and I think drawings in hand are a lot more clearer than trying to wave my arms and suggest some of the ideas that we have.
Okay.
We will plan on doing it on whatever date.
On January 3rd.
The only reason I raised the, the only reason I interrupted you was because if, if there's a, if there's a, there's a desire to change the zoning--
Now's the opportunity.
Tonight's your night. This is your night.
That's true, right. So we, what we talked about is, and why we had this sort of add to our agenda about zoning, is not necessarily for this--
Wasn't for this.
But it is an opportunity, if you want to take advantage of it. We, it's a little--
I would just change, I would just change the wording to be something like--
Change this right here?
That, to be something like, it has to be 550 feet from any road with more than 12 houses or something, whatever the Carberry count is, or something along those lines.
Road that fronts, that provides the frontage to the--
Provides the frontage even better, right? That's far better.
So this would say from an existing street that provides the frontage.
So we can talk about that under the zoning, but I just wanted to get their opinion on it, that's all.
Okay, all right.
And the, I mean, the other thing, if you guys don't care, you don't care, but if you're looking to file an NOI, why wait until January 3rd to get our opinion on which path is the best one?
Yeah, I just, it's confusing, because if we're advocating that, that seems like we'd have an opinion.
Well, that's what I mean.
I'm not advocating, I'm putting it out there that if they want to do it, tonight's the night.
Well, that's why it feels like we should be--
And I'm not advocating it, but I'm just suggesting that if that is a direction they like us to pursue, it's sort of a speak now or, or hold your peace until March.
Well, the, no, but the board can decide independently if they want a zoning change.
I agree with that.
But in terms of land planning, it's the part that I didn't want to try and dictate to them how to do their plan.
Fair enough, fair enough.
But we can decide--
And I further--
Right.
Yeah.
You know, some ideas to resolve.
So I, I think where we are, understanding that tonight's the night, that we would appreciate it if the board would--
Consider that.
Consider that. And in the meantime, we are obviously looking at other options that we haven't arrived at, but certainly that is one that we should hold the door open to for our benefit and try to move forward.
Okay, so then if you're interested in that language, you can stay for that part of the discussion as well?
Right.
Okay, great. So are we offset then to move to traffic?
Sorry about that.
No, it's a, it's a good thing to have discussed, so I'm glad that you guys raised it. Okay.
So we have Giles Hamm, who is with Van Assen Associates, our traffic consultant, who's done a traffic impact assessment. He's going to have a PowerPoint presentation that will touch on the highlights of that, and then obviously open it up to discussion, questions, et cetera, that the board have, and we know that StanTech is here with respect to their review, their peer review of this traffic analysis.
Hello.
Good evening. Giles Hamm, a principal with Van Assen Associates, and we've conducted a very detailed traffic study for the proposed project. In conducting our work, we've met with staff a few times. We've met with regional planning a few times, and as you know, you've had a peer review done, and StanTech's here this evening. So it's been really a very comprehensive and coordinated approach. I think, as you're aware, the Route 138 corridor is under study by regional planning, Mass DOT, and also their consultant, GPI. And those actual improvements are under study but are funded in the state improvement program. So we know it's a busy corridor, but in a couple of years, construction should start with improvements in the corridor. So I think that's pretty significant. And, but the scope of those and the magnitude of those improvements are beyond the scope of a small project like this in terms of, in terms of traffic generation.
I do have copies of the relevant pages of the tip. The project, that project is funded in 2020 at the rate of $18 million, so.
Great.
They've also, the same year, they're also funding improvements to the Chickatahbit Route 28 intersection as well. Another million and a half.
And Lauren did share, I think, a Dropbox link with us, that study that was just referenced, so.
Yes.
So all of these slides are really, are within the traffic study, and this is just a schematic of the, this is just a schematic of the roadway network in terms of the analysis. I will tell you, for, for a project of this size, we included a six-study area intersection, which is really pretty comprehensive for, for the size of project. We've done traffic counts in the morning period and evening period in, in May of this year. And again, this is just a schematic of the intersection. So Canton Ave, we have Hemlock Drive here, down around the triangular piece, Blue Hill Avenue, and then down Ken Avenue. So that's the study area. Pretty comprehensive, yes.
So I did have a question about the study area and how you arrived at it, because these intersections here in Canton, and I think you identified a larger percentage of the traffic going northbound on Canton Ave, but you didn't go past Carberry Lane. So I'm just wondering, who was in part of the conversation of deciding the study area?
We had, we had developed that study area based upon the project itself. So I had, I had selected the study area.
So you didn't have a conversation with the town engineer or with the town planner about what intersection--
Certainly not initially, but they're certainly well aware of the extent of the project.
Okay, continue.
And we went, and we carried to the south because of just the congestion that's down there. We know it's not within this community. Okay, so, so that's the, that's the study area itself. I know you can't read, you might be able to read those numbers, but I can't. But this is just the peak hour traffic volumes. So this is the base traffic volumes for the area. Canton Ave to-- Canton Ave to the, sorry, that working, to the southern section here, you have over 2,000 cars an hour on that section of roadway, so it's fairly busy. We've shared these counts with regional planning in terms of their study, and our numbers are consistent, consistent with the numbers in their, in their study for the corridor. We do really a comprehensive safety analysis of the area, we look at, we look at accident data, we look at speed data, we look at site distances at the driveway, and this is just a summary of the, of the speeds that are really near our site driveway. The speed limit is 30 miles an hour, and really what we like to talk about is the 85th percentile speed, which is the speed that 85% of the cars travel at or under. So the majority of cars are traveling 41 to 43 miles an hour under, and that's also the basis for how we look at the site distance at the driveway, so based upon those speeds and the geometrics of the driveway, we know our driveway can, is safe and conforms to industry and state standards in terms of safety.
Can you go back a slide, please?
Sure.
So that note, can you explain that note? It says imbalances exist due to numerous curb paths and side streets that are not shown.
So when there's, so when we count intersections, if there's driveways or roadway, small drive roadways, you're not going to get an exact balance of a car, so if you look at northbound between intersections, they might, they may not completely match? Does that make sense? So that's why we have that note, and then if you also look at, sometimes when we summarize, we summarize an hour of traffic in terms of 15-minute increments, and sometimes the hours may be off by 15 minutes, so, just to note that you're not going to add up the numbers and see a complete, complete exact summary, so.
Thank you.
An example of that would be Fuller Village. Fuller Village is in the middle, you may have people coming and going out of Fuller Village. I'm counting here, I'm counting here, how come the numbers aren't the same?
I see.
By the time I get to this one, something happened.
Because that's not an intersection that's in there. Okay, thank you.
And this is just, again, I don't know if you can see the numbers, but this is, so we project out, with state standards, we project out seven years, so this is just the 2020-25 analysis condition in terms of the volumes. We grow traffic by 1% a year over seven years, and it just gives us the base no-build condition. We spent a good effort on reviewing similar type projects in terms of establishing traffic generation rates for this project, and so you can see that the 54 units generates 386 trips over the day, and that would be, half those cars would come in, and half those cars would come out, come out over a 24-hour period. As traffic engineers, we really focus in on what happens during the critical peak hours. So the 54 units generates 28 to 29 trips totaling and out at the driveway, so that's about a vehicle every two minutes. And keep in mind, when you look at these numbers, if a car exits the driveway, they're going to go left or right, so not all this traffic would go in any one section of the roadway.
Can you back up just for a second? On the last slide, I think it was, I know you can't read it probably, but...
I got copies here.
Weekday morning peak hour and weekday evening peak hour for Carberry Lane, it's showing one vehicle movement to the left and one vehicle movement to the right, and nothing going on to Hemlock Drive.
Yeah.
So just for the, for the room and anybody looking at this, does that, is that read as one car in two hours leaves the property?
These are, these are one-hour volumes.
So that's one car every one hour?
Those are the exact counts, yes.
Right, that's why, so I wanted to call attention to that, so that, so you're, so over a two-hour period, you'd be saying two cars would take a left, two cars would take a right?
Well, not necessarily so, I mean, so this is, this is a summary of a one-hour count, so from, so it's a summary of a one-hour count. It doesn't mean if you go two hours, all the numbers double, you know, the numbers fluctuate, so. So these are, each number here is a one-hour volume of that specific turn movement.
I know.
Did you do this on a holiday, or did you do this on a standard weekday?
These are standard times, it was done in May of this year, been reviewed by your consultant. You know, I looked in terms of, I know you focused on a driveway there, but in terms of the corridor numbers and the larger numbers, we've looked at what the MPO has for their numbers, and they're relatively consistent.
And now if you go to the next slide again, on a peak morning, you'd be seeing 12 left from here, or 16, excuse me.
So in the morning, you're going to have, this is based on actual experience, 12 entering cars, 16 exiting cars, over that, over a one-hour period?
These are based on actual counts at four different locations, Quissett Brook, Home Inc., and Milton, also in May, in a May timeframe, and two different projects that Northland has done in Belmont at the McLean Hospital, and so those, this 7.4 vehicles per unit per day is an average of those four, of the traffic counts from those four developments, which we thought were essentially consistent with the type of developments here, they're age-restricted or condominium units without children, so similarly situated in terms of the owner occupants.
How does that compare to, I'm sorry, Denny? Go ahead. How does that compare to what your, I know that there's a reference standard that I understand is used by traffic engineers for different uses, and how does the count that you said is based on the four developments compare to the standard?
I think they're, they're fairly consistent.
Okay. Okay. Denny, you had a question?
I just had a question on the comparables, so the average cost of a unit at Quissett Brook is going to be significantly less than the average unit at...
Still going to be occupied by two people.
Still two people. It's, I know it's hard to tell.
To them, in public transportation and all that sort of stuff.
They don't have vans, they, their condominium ownership, two occupants, generally one to two cars, very similar to what you'd see here, age-restricted, no children, none of that coming and going that you see with children.
I'm sorry, maybe, since we're, since we're asking questions along the way, would, do you mind if we have, yeah, please come on up, I'm sorry.
Walter Heller.
Thank you, please have a seat, because you're, some of our questions you can help answer as well.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board, Walter Heller from Stantec Engineering.
Welcome, Walter.
Thank you.
So let's, I think maybe, let's finish going through your presentation, let's get your...
So one thing that I do want to add is, there is a standard, and we compared their four residential units to that standard, and it was consistent.
Okay.
So that is a pretty good number.
Okay, great.
Yeah, and there's also, just so you know, there's also, so there are different codes, there's codes in terms of condominiums, townhouses, there's also a code for senior housing, and we're, it's not an exact match, so, but if you looked at like senior housing, it would be a lot, lot less than this, one of the, one of the codes that we could use, and we, you know, chose not to use that, we think, we think this is appropriate in terms of, in terms of what we counted and how many sites we counted, follows the industry standard. So we didn't go out and count one development, said, here you go, we think this is appropriate, we counted a few developments, so we're very, very confident, these are accurate.
Okay, April, you had a question right now?
So I have a question about the scope, and maybe you can comment as we go, but we're, our scope is supposed to be approved by our board, which it wasn't, and I mentioned last time, but it's also supposed to stretch at least to the nearest signalized intersections on Canton Ave, which is the road that provides the frontage, according to the zoning, and obviously that didn't happen here, so I'd like some feedback perhaps from you about whether or not these outcomes are changed in any way, had the measures extended according to the requirements of the zoning.
So from looking at the volumes that the site generates, it would be, in my opinion, that even if you extended it, it wouldn't have any effect. Most of the traffic that you see in this area is more regional, it's not really point source driven, it's a lot of cut-through from the region, which the 138 study actually is taking that into account.
So your opinion then is we don't have to care about the intersection with Canton Ave and Blue Hill Parkway, because even adding 20 new cars is not going to change it?
It wouldn't affect it, no.
I can tell you, I live on Canton Ave, and I can tell you that peak morning, I can't get out of our shared driveway.
Well, that's why I'm wondering how that wouldn't impact the service level at the intersection.
I can only tell you, if I look, it's all the way down the hill towards the Parkway, and it's all the way up to Town Hall, and the only way I get out, and it's in both directions, the only way I get out is if someone lets us out, because I don't want to get my car hit and put my nose out there, but that's every morning at about 7:30, 7:45. And that's why I wonder also, April's question, is there this sort of Canton Ave, even adding 20 cars to that, because you have Gile Road traffic signal, that's how you get to the high school in the morning, and then you've got Thatcher when people turn left, and there's no left turn lane, and there's no left turn light there. It is, there are issues on Canton Ave, and even adding 20 cars to that, you know, could make it even worse.
And frankly, I mean, this is something that, I worked on this language with Alex for that very reason, when we were doing this.
So I guess two, two points, one is, morning peak, 16 cars are leaving the site in the morning, approximately half are taking a left, approximately half are going right, some number of the ones that are coming out going right on Canton are going over to Blue Hill Avenue before they get to Blue Hills Parkway, so if eight plus or minus cars are coming onto Canton Ave, heading towards that intersection, one every three or four minutes, is that contributing enough to say, whoa, we shouldn't permit this project, or we should fight, you know, or...
Well, there might be a mitigating fact, a mitigating measure that needs to be considered, that's all. And so because we, it did, we did talk about this when the zoning was written, and there was concern about this all the way down, and I think it was anticipation when we did the zoning, that the study would come all the way down to the Parkway.
At a minimum.
Right, at a minimum.
We're going to have a discussion about it, remember?
Why are we, just because the numbers were up there earlier, there was numbers on speed, is that, was that stuff all pretty consistent, normal, normal for a 30 mile an hour?
To be going over 40?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
I, I, so we have some, we don't think it's normal that they're going that high, so in our mitigation we propose, we're looking at some measures to slow speeds down there, so, but that's why we do the speed study, you know, as we know, people typically travel above the speed limit, but, you know, once you're over 10 miles an hour, we're 11 and 13 miles an hour speed limit, that tells us that, you know, we should do something.
Yep.
We propose mitigation measures when we get to that piece that go well beyond this Carberry Lane to the north, that take into account speeds and downhill grades that go all the way to Unquity.
So I guess while we're on the topic of the scope of the study, the extent to which it, do members have an opinion about that right now, that we want to ask for additional information?
Yes, yes, we want to increase that scope.
I mean, I think it was an oversight.
I think we have to.
To be frank, not to talk to somebody about the scope.
And it may be that what you said, Ned, is the outcome, and Walter, what you said is the outcome, but I do think it's part of our due diligence here, that it would, it would be good to get that in writing, you know, via the extension of the study.
We have to come up with mitigations all the way around.
Well, you have to come up with mitigation that is appropriate to the development.
If there's an impact, but we don't know if there is, we don't know what the service level of that intersection is, and we don't know.
And it may be that this, this thing that I described is something that's, you know, part of a different traffic mitigation that the town needs to look at, you know, but it is, it's worth noting, it's something that was discussed when the zoning was written, the counts aren't hugely high, but where you're suggesting you're going to do mitigation measures along Canton Ave, you know, it's, I think it is something that we're interested in seeing.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if they need to reopen their traffic study and do a whole new one, maybe the town has some data on this, I don't know, but I think there should be some homework to at least pacify us, given that this was a mistake.
Understood, and so in terms of, you know, we can...
Yeah, so I may just add a couple things, so, and we're still going to get to some mitigation, because where we are, we know we have an impact, we know we add traffic, and we want to do things to enhance safety out there, bring the speeds down, but I also tell you, I think in your new zoning, you talk about an impacted intersection where you have 60 vehicles going through it, so during peak hour, so we don't even have 60 cars going through our, our front door, our driveway.
So you're talking about the Traffic Impact Fund, that so it may not apply to this project?
And, and then...
I don't know, I just want to make a comment about that, I don't know if that has anything to do with this, I mean, those are two separate things, I mean, that's a new, for a larger scale, larger impact project vehicle for us, but this is something that we spent a lot of time talking about last year, whenever we passed this on.
So when you, and that's helpful, that's, so when you look at, well, when you look at the cars as they disperse, as they leave the site, so in any direction, at most we're talking eight or 10 cars added to any approach to any intersection, is obviously, as Ned indicated, as traffic travels north or south, it's going to disperse in the driveway, so by the time it gets up towards this area of town, it's going to be a lot less than what we projected in the study, so I think you just need to keep that, keep that in mind as you, as you talk about a project like this. And again, just, these are the build networks, this is 2025 build network standard, standard traffic procedures, and we've looked at all these intersections.
So, sorry, what figure were you on there?
Well, that is the build traffic, you want the figure number in terms of, in the traffic study itself?
Yes, I'm looking at...
That would be figure number seven.
Figure number seven, okay.
So that's just...
Sure, go ahead, Denny.
I, I drove through this on the way here tonight, so Carberry Lane isn't actually like that, it's a little bit down here, so it's not a direct, on an earlier slide, you said the, at peak hour, I think it was 12 in the morning and 16 in the evening, was entering the site, right, entering the site?
That would be our, with our new development.
With the new development. How much space is right here? How many car lengths is that?
This, that's already here?
Yeah, this right here.
That's the, that's the distance between Blue Hill Ave and the left...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Several hundred feet, I can't give you the exact number, several hundred feet.
Because I'm just thinking, just adding 16 cars here, with half that have to turn there, and even this other way, leaving in the mornings, or...
Again, that's one vehicle trip every two minutes.
So, but if you look at this section of roadway in the morning and evening, we're projecting between four and six cars on that section of roadway over an hour, because keep in mind, as the traffic leaves the site, some goes left, some goes right, and then you have directionality of it, so it's a, it's a really, it's, when it disperses out, it becomes a small number.
It's not, it's not 16 vehicles leaving the site at the same time, taking the same move.
I get that.
Do you have tables 10 and 11 in your presentation up here?
I do not.
Because to that, kind of to that question, we had, the Master Plan Implementation Committee had a traffic study done for Milton Village, and it was presented to the committee a couple nights ago, and Beta Group was the consultant who did that work, and the engineer who made the presentation said, talked about the ratings of A, B, C, D, E, and F, and he said that E and F are considered unacceptable in terms of movement, so I was, when I was looking at these charts, there's lots of Es and Fs in the tables, tables, table 10 and 11, and some of them are in Canton, which is, I guess, not really something that we can do much about, but the Blue Hill Ave at Brushell Road and the Canton Ave at Hemlock, Canton Ave at Hemlock is a B, so that seems fine, but can you explain why on Blue, so at Blue Hill Ave and Brushell Road, they're E in the existing, in the no-build, and in the 2025 build? Do those factor in improvements that the Mass DOT is talking about with their Route 138 study?
They do not, so I've met with the MPO a couple times, I don't even know if those plans are public yet, I know there's been meetings with the town, but I'm not aware if those plans are...
They are, and you have copies of the, of that study in the Dropbox.
And I guess we'll have to go back, but I'd be curious, maybe Walter, if you looked at, if those were intent, if that, that intersection was thought to be an improvement over an E when they do that work? if that, that intersection was thought to be an improvement over an E when they do that work, that intersection of Blue Hill Ave and Brushhill Road. Because we all know, the ones who live in here in Milton and use that, we all know what a troubled intersection that is. And I certainly would hope that that wouldn't be an E at the end of work done on 138.
So when they'll go, when the state goes in to design the intersection, they will design it with a growth rate. So they will not design it just for today's condition. They'll actually send it out and design for future. Now, I have not seen their design. I don't know what their design is now, but it might only go up to a D.
I don't think they have designs. I think this is just concept, which is why I don't know how they're going to fund it in the 2022. An $18 million project, I mean, that just seems like a placeholder, really.
Well, the other thing that I read in that report, and that was that the state would do 138, but the town owns all the cross streets, so Canton Ave, Brushhill Road. And the town would be responsible for doing the work that's on those roadways. So I don't know what extent, how far down it goes. At the intersection, there, there's some change in pedestrian and bicycle, you know, which I want to get to eventually here too. But, and the reason I ask is because the, it would be helpful to understand. Because the other thing here is, Blue Hill Ave at Canton Ave, existing is a D, but under the no build, it goes to an F. And under a question mark, question mark, which I'm assuming is the 2020, no, the 2025 build is an F. And then there's some future out that's an F. And yet, the Canton Ave at the site is a B. So if you're having, if you have an F, to Denny's point, of those cars, you know, we're talking, there's not a great distance between these drives and roads, right? So if this, if this is all an F over here, how is this not impacting the F situation, I guess?
So the, the rating is really based upon the volume of traffic that's on the main line, and then how much traffic is turning on the side street? So there's kind of two factors. And to be honest with you, the, my thing's working here. You know, so we, we know this, we know there's congestion here, everybody knows that. But that, the issues that you have here at Brushhill Road, aren't going to carry back to our driveway. So what we're looking at is when we have five or 10 cars turning out of our driveway, how much delay is it for that car to make that left or right? And the more volume you have making that movement, the longer, the longer delay you're going to have. But since our volume is relatively low, our delay is going to be?
Okay, so the question would be, if this is a short distance, and people are queued up to go around the corner here because this is backed up, then how is somebody, is somebody going to pull out to make a left and block traffic going this way?
They're not going to be able to get out to get the left.
And so if you've driven, I've driven this, you know, so I'm speaking from experience, not from your numbers or from ratings or anything. And I'm not suggesting that this project has to solve the bigger problem. But if there's, if we want to consider what mitigation we want to do along the whole Canton Ave, what you can help with, with mitigation. I see that as the sort of bigger, if some assistance in this area might be the, the place to focus it. And I'll let you get to the mitigation. But I do think this is an important area that's not really addressed in mitigation here.
So if I can just add a couple of things. And so when we look at our, our driveway volumes, and the volume that's on Canton Ave near our driveway, you know, you're talking about a volume around 600 to 700 cars on Canton Ave. That's not the 2,000 cars that are further south. So when we look at 700 cars on Canton Ave in front of our driveway, and we're trying to, you know, we're trying to get five or eight cars out of that driveway, they can make that movement. And that's what, that's what the analysis tells us. That's, and, and I've been out here, I've, I've driven here, I, I know, I know exactly what happens here. This gets backed up because this left and this right are getting into one lane. And what really happens is, the roadway backs up. So if you want to make that left, you're not moving down the road because it's, because it's congested. So we understand that. My understanding that what, what the improvement project's going to do is they're going to, when I last knew, I thought they were going to, they were going to be widening that roadway. So you may have two lanes to receive, to receive that traffic. That'll make it operate much better and safer and increase that capacity. But when you, when you look at a project of this size, you know, we can't fix that multimillion dollar fix that Mass DOT is proposing and will do. And, and the nice thing is that the funding is secured. A lot of projects they identify, and they don't have funding. Money is, money is secured for this project.
Sorry, go ahead, Bill?
I think Giles is right. But the town took and met with central transportation staff. So when Giles says he met with the regional people, that's, central transportation is the staff to the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, how we spend our federal money. The town made comments back on the corridor study itself. And what we asked is that CTPS take a look at the timing of the light that is here at Blue Hill Ave, Brushhill Road, and that they consider taking, putting in a left-hand turn in here, coming from here. Right now, if you're, coming here, and everybody, if you want to go to Brushhill Road, you have to come in here, go here, go here. You've got two lanes here, two narrow lanes. You're in the left-hand lane, and you have to get in the right-hand lane if you want to go straight. So what we asked is that you, that they think about putting a turning lane, putting in a turning signal to allow X amount of cars to take a left-hand turn here without having to do this and come into the jug handle. We asked them to look at the jug handle and not make it that everybody has to use the jug handle to get out. So we've asked them to look at this, we've asked them to widen this out, we've asked them to pull back on this, on the, on the intersection itself. Those are things that we've submitted to CTPS. I don't know how it's fitting into the study yet, because it's not as meant designed yet.
So wasn't the original reason that they had to do this whole one-way thing all the way around was for safety? Because it was dangerous to take a left hand?
They have a very wide right-of-way within that intersection. The road became very narrow, they can't take and space it out. There is room to do some of these things. We've asked them to do a few other things within the corridor itself. When you come down 138, we've asked them to put in a turning lane and a signal at Napaunsa Valley Parkway. We've asked that they put in a turning lane and time the light at Milton and Dollar, that you can take a left on to Milton from Blue Hill Ave. I think when you look at the plans inside the CTPS study, you'll see that they did make improvements. They have put sidewalks on one side. They've put in for a light at Napaunsa Valley Parkway and Blue Hill Ave. They are looking at the potential left-hand turn onto Brushhill.
We're considering that, but we don't know yet.
So Bill, we're, I'm trying to find where I read in here what the town's responsible for and what the state's responsible for in, because we keep hearing that there's funding. But there's only a certain amount of funding, right?
It's within their right-of-way, yes.
And they're, in that intersection, so, so this is not there. None of this is in there.
They do not own that, that's us, correct.
So if they're saying there's improvements here, I just don't understand how far back they go and what we would have to do as a town.
I don't know what our right-of-way, I, I don't know what their right-of-way width is in that area. I know that it's in, in those plans, but I don't know what it is.
All right, so, yes, April?
I mean, this is all leading to my comment, which this whole 138 study is very conceptual. And I am happy to see that there's money in the tip. But I also see that projects fall off the tip routinely if they're not ready. So I'm just anxious about us approving a project that could have impacts here based on something that may or may not happen in the future. It sounds like it likely will happen, but we have no real clue when that will be. And we don't have any designs, and we don't have any surety. So I'm just very anxious about the current situation. And I know what you're saying, the volumes are not significantly high. But, I mean, for me, it's important to know what the actual impact is going to be. Because I'm with you, Cheryl, I'm sitting in that queue past their driveway all the time. And I'm thinking, six more cars even. That's going to be two more lights that we have to sit through, because only three cars can get through every?
Yeah, just, but I, I think it is important to remind, because these, these, the, the way we talk about traffic can be very confusing. So you always have to remind yourself that it's six an hour. So that's not six cars at a single light cycle. It's probably, it's one car, if you, if you believe the numbers, it's one car every, however many, every two minutes? Every ten minutes?
Yeah, but I'm saying, when you're queued all the way back to their driveway, you're sitting there for at least a half an hour, trying to get through the intersection.
All I'm trying to say to you, you're saying it's six more cars.
Well, then it's three more.
It's one more every 10 minutes.
While you're sitting there for 30 minutes, waiting for the lights to progress up through the queue, if three more cars come out in front of you.
But it's one more car every 10 minutes, is all I'm trying to say.
I know. My, my point is, you're sitting there for 30 minutes.
Because it's F rated.
In your car, waiting to move up, because it takes so long to get through that light.
So I know, I understand that.
So any car, any intersection.
We've approved the permit for Pulte, 23 single-family houses. Peak hour traffic impacts are the same as the peak hour that projected here. No traffic mitigation required as part of that special permit. If, if an equivalent development went in here, as of right, you'd be no traffic mitigation, but you'd have the same volume of traffic and the same impact relative to that volume on this roadway.
So this is where, and Walter, I'm going to ask you for your opinion in a moment. But, you know, this is where the public, I think, and the board has their frustrations, is that we live here, we experience these intersections, and then we hear experts, you know, come in and suggest that, you know, it's really not so bad, and this project's not going to make it any worse. But that's not the day-to-day experience. So if there are things, and I understand, and I, I understand that these counts are not very high. But on the other hand, this is a significant project. And if there's something that is a mitigating factor, we want to make sure that you understand what we feel that some of the issues are, so that the mitigating factors may not be based on what your numbers are necessarily telling you. But it's, it's something which can make an improvement, which helps the neighbors and the town, and the boards to support that what the, that the project, you know, can make things a little bit better. It's not going to correct the big problems, we know that. And the, there's no way we could expect this one project of this, even though it's a big project for Milton, to ever correct what is a state roadway there. But if there are things that can help, knowing that there are times when this is a really challenging time, and if there are things that are going to come out of that, whether, if the, I'm assuming that the funding will go forward. If the town's responsible for something to be done in that section, seems to me that's a good mitigation source for this project.
But we don't, until this past town meeting, we didn't have the authorization to do that. And this project doesn't currently meet the obligations for that, for, to be able to fund future projects.
This is right in here, we can, we have the discretion.
You can only do what's reasonable.
The planning board may require added discretion for mitigation measures to be taken to address traffic impacts.
And that's fine. But until recently, we couldn't say, contribute a certain amount of money to be used on the future improvements of 138. And that, frankly, that's probably the most appropriate thing to do here, to deal with future traffic issues potentially.
I, when I read this, and I had time in the car, so I could actually read through this whole thing front to back. This is the Route 138 study. And when I read that, and, and I looked at what they were suggesting for all these things that were going to make improvements, when I, and I can't find where that is, and I will look for where it is in here, where it said the town's responsible for the side, all these cross-side roads, I thought, well, where's the money going to come from for that? So that's what I'm interested, I mean, even if this project, instead of saying, we're going to do some things which you've suggested you might do, say, you know, we'd, we'd like to help improvements at the intersection that's the most challenged, closest to us, by making a contribution to that effort. It's something to consider, it's something to talk about. I agree that the mitigation has to be reasonable to the project, it can't be something bigger than that. But we're talking about, you know, suggesting there are some mitigation measures that can be taken. Whether there's anything that can be done to help this, that we've just been talking about. Walter, do you have any thoughts about that?
So I actually live in Milton as well. I drive through this intersection every morning. I don't know if you're aware, I was also past EPW Director for the town for 10 years. So very familiar with this. The Canton Ave traffic that comes up and goes to Villa Village, that intersection is the bottleneck of it all. So any mitigation on the side roads will not help with volume processing. It really has to be done at that intersection, which is state-owned. So it's really in the state's ballpark to actually do it. The intersection during peak hours operates at a level E. It's a bad intersection. The 20 cars, not even, but we'll say 20 cars for ease of conversation, added to that intersection doesn't make it an E minus. And even if it was operating as a C, adding 20 cars wouldn't make it a D. So when I say there's not going to see any change, when you even go to, like, down by Yolen Ring, that intersection, adding 20 cars, will not change the level of service. It'll keep it the same. The, before we even put, so I was EPW Director when we put the lights in, it was a four-way stop down there. Making it an intersection was a huge improvement, because that did allow movement to happen. The four-way stop actually didn't allow people to move. But now with traffic generations that have, came up, high school time, you're backed up all the time in that area. So if you look at this, and you kind of come up to Giles Road, that's backed up all the time on peak hours, and Thatcher Street as well. So if you took, when you're sitting there and turning into Giles Road, Indian Cliffs really doesn't add to it. And that's a huge development. So if you took away Indian Cliffs, you would still be sitting there. So that's why I say, this development really doesn't have a big impact on volume.
Brian?
Just speaking to scope for a minute. I, I appreciate everything that was just said. That being said, and this goes back to an earlier comment I made. I think that on an application of this magnitude, if the butters that are around this project do not comply with the zoning as part of the application, and have not, and not have the planning board considering the submission in accordance with the zoning, is just asking for problems, in my opinion. So my, I'm just, I just wanted to put that out there. I think it's important that we be pretty compliant with what's in front of us.
And I think we're happy to do that. I think we'd like some specific direction as to how, what you would like us to look at relative to, I guess, the Unquity, Blue Hills Parkway, Canton Ave intersection. That's the next, that's the next signalized intersection. It's about two miles removed from this site, but it is still the next signalized intersection.
Right. I mean, I think the cars that are going northbound on Canton Ave, you know, are going to continue northbound just from, if they're, if they're going to, unless they're peeling off to Blue Hill Parkway. But mostly, they're going all the way down Canton Ave.
I think, well, I, I think probably in the morning peak, I think Giles' analysis showed that some would cut over to Blue Hill Ave because they're making a move into the city that's going straight up Blue Hill Ave as opposed to Canton Ave. So there is a dispersal.
I meant past the, the site, the drive, the new roadway.
You're talking about more broad, more broadly, the volume of traffic that's coming north on Canton Ave in the morning?
Yeah, I mean, once you're past that intersection, where you already made the decision to be on Canton Ave, and you're going to go past the site and keep going.
Correct.
A lot of those cars are going to continue going that way. So they will hit that intersection with Blue Hills Parkway, which I think is why we've put that into the zoning, is that they're not going to be peeling off left as much on Hemlock or on, I mean, those other Robins.
I was just talking about the small, the, the cars coming out of this development in the morning are making that split.
Decision to go either way.
Because they're making that decision. If you, you're right, if they've already come on to Canton Ave, they're heading all the way through Milton on Canton Ave.
But all the more reason to, to look at it. Because if you show that of the six cars an hour that are coming onto this road, three of them are turning on Dollar Lane to get over to 138, then that, that actually helps your, helps your cause. So I'm just suggesting, it's helpful for this board to take into consideration data that's called for in this zoning bylaw. Based on testimony that has been given from the public today.
And honestly, I think it's as beneficial to the applicant.
Right.
That's my point.
We're not, we're not arguing, debating that.
I understand you're not, so.
So what I would ask with that, given this, this whole discussion about this intersection, is if you could make any kind of commentary? is if you could make any kind of commentary, I know it's preliminary, you know, but take a look at what's suggested in this study for that intersection, to say that you think that whatever improvement was going to come from this, because then that's something for us, you know, to consider, that, you know, in whatever we need to do as a town to advocate for that funding through our elected officials. But it puts this in context, where right now, it's, it's not, you reference it in the study, but then you, then that's it. You said you look at it, but then there's no commentary on it?
Right, but if I can add, in all fairness, so, when we had started this study, we had met with the regional planning, they were just getting, their data collection was getting going, they were starting with some towns, there was no study done. And I would have loved to have their study been completed, when I completed my study, and I would have used their information, I would have put their improvement, I would have done all that stuff. But the reality is, it just wasn't done, the timing just didn't match up. But, and I won't get a lot of the planning we have there, but having said that, we know we have an impact, we know we want to do things out there that make it safer, and that's what we did. We came up with a plan, looking at some signs, looking for some speed signs, some radar signs to slow people down. Going southbound, we're putting a speed sign and a sharp right turn sign to warn people of that turn. So, you know, we think we're doing our share in terms of the level of this project's impact in an effort to enhance safety along the corridor. These are things that we can do, and that we will implement. The biggest, that Mass DOT plan, the $14 million plan, that's well beyond this project. But I can look at that and identify what they're doing.
Just, you know, commentary about, you know, what that intersection might look like. Like, right now, we look at it, and we see it's an E or an F going, you know, forward, and if you said to us, the way Mass DOT is looking at it, it's going to now be upgraded, you know, it'll be a D instead, you know, because then that's, that's something we can factor in.
That should be all documented in their study.
Right.
Do you like to do an analysis of that study, sort of highlight the?
I just, I just think that intersection, from my opinion, other members have a different opinion about that?
No, I mean, one of the things, I just made a note for myself, is, because I haven't gotten through the whole thing yet, but to take a key look at what the potential mitigating factors are that that is proposing for the overall problem in Milton, right? And when you look at what, what's being called for, are there elements of that plan that could be implemented, maybe as opposed to doing something that's already called for, that might be more meaningful and more impactful, that's equally valued, or something along those lines? That's what I would like to hear from you, is what's proposed, and does any of it make sense to do as part of this project?
So, before you get to the mitigation, I did want to focus a little bit on the pedestrian and bicycle. You mentioned that you did a comprehensive field inventory of pedestrian and bicycle facilities, but there's no data in here that shows what that is. And, you know, again, it's a 12, you have it noted as a 12-foot each travel lane, and it's striped for bikes. Again, I know this, I live on Canton Ave, I've experienced this road, I'm not always riding out that way, but we might have some folks here, there's a lot of bicycles who do go to use the Blue Hills, you know?
So, what you have, you go to this plan here, you go down towards, probably down towards Dollar Lane, that area, they do have bike charrows of the pavement markings on the southern part of the corridor, and that's what we've inventoried, they have those there. They don't have them as they travel southerly up to Brush Hill Road, so we're proposing to add those charrels in that aren't there today. We're proposing to update some of the signage, some of the warning signs, some of the curve signs, adding some stop signs that aren't out there today, changing some speed limit signs that are old and on a utility pole, and then we're adding the radar speed sign to, so when people now are going 41 miles an hour, 43 miles an hour, they're going to see it, and they're going to know that they're speeding, and that, we find that is very effective, those radar speed signs to help people slow down, they see they're going too fast. So, those are the things that we can do. But in terms of the bicycle, we did inventory that, and we've made recommendations to carry that charrel through the corridor.
Okay.
And there are no sidewalks out there, that's.
Right.
You know, for example, the property, the edge of pavement along the entire furniture of this property is only a couple of feet off of the retaining wall, off of the stone wall. There's no room for sidewalk within the public's right-of-way, so that's why we've proposed the walking path.
Right.
Seventy-five foot setback behind the wall, as a safe alternative to a.
Is there any, will there be any connections? Because if the Mass DOT goes forward, they're talking about bike lanes and better sidewalks and crossings, et cetera. So, are there opportunities for people to get to that path?
Well, one of the things, when we met with.
Crossing Canton Ave from one of those streets.
When we met with town staff, they requested that we extend the walking path through, at least to the next driveway.
Mm-hmm.
With the idea being that that would then be able to connect to a sidewalk that might be installed as part of the Mastod project, connecting all the way over to the Trailside Museum. Right now, there's no sidewalk there, but we agreed that we could extend that part, that walking path through.
Okay. Rich, you have a question?
Just a question, I know it probably won't be part of this, but at the same time, I know there's two pictures of the 30 mile an hour speed limits on there, I'm sure it's just a picture, but now that we have the ability to make roads 25, I think, miles an hour, do you, will, again, it might not be for them to do, but will it be possible to utilize that?
An answer?
I do. You can only put 25 in densely, densely settled areas.
Ah, that's right. So, this is not densely settled.
Settled area.
Okay, all right.
So, double A zone?
Densely settled area.
There's a lot of trees there.
Canton Avenue, there's, it's like within 200, no, every house has to be within 200 feet. Along Canton Avenue, you do have that, along 138, you have.
Can you just stretch it?
Doesn't meet the standards.
That, it has 54 units, doesn't it? Right, 54 units.
Well, we'll be a lot slower within the development, obviously, but.
So, you've asked, though, and that's not possible?
Correct.
Okay.
So.
There was a request that we studied with, or at least posed to Chase Berkeley and John Thompson, was, we're proposing a flashing speed sign with a, with a right turn approaching the jug handle here, particularly at night, with people driving through Milton who aren't familiar with that turn.
Yeah, that's good to hear.
To give them a flashing warning that that's there. There was an alternative request from one of the neighbors, I think Hale and Tucker Smith, asked if they could do a stop sign there. That's a, that's an issue for the town to address, what's the more appropriate, I think John Thompson and Chase were not inclined to go along with the stop sign as an alternative to the, to the.
We didn't think it met the warrants.
We're happy to go do either one, whichever is appropriate.
In the very beginning, when I gave my update, I left out a piece about, we have taken this entire project together and in pieces, and brought it to all the different staff in town. We've had meetings with the building commissioner, the DPW director, the police chief, the fire chief, the town engineer, all at one time and separately, and we've broken out the different pieces. So, we took the entire, and the board of health, we took the, and the conservation agent, we took the entire package, met as one with them. We had the developer take and bring his people to that particular meeting. They gave an overview. We had them further break it down and take it back, and go to each one of the people that required, so that the environmental people went with the conservation agent, the DPW did the utilities, they did the traffic. So, they've seen this several different times. So, those questions about, what about meeting the warrants in certain areas dealing with traffic control? We've done that, we have had those conversations.
Excuse me, Bill?
They are ongoing.
Can you explain what it, what you mean by, does it meet the warrant?
You'd do that better than I will.
But Walter, if you want to explain what that is, or can you help Bill?
There is a, there's a standard that has to be met. You have to have so many cars in so much of an area. There needs to be so much sight, there can only be a traffic control item within so many feet of another one.
So, can I ask a question?
You can't set people up for failure.
So, like, when the stop signs were added on Highland, there were two that were added to slow traffic down? What's the warrant for that? Those are very close together.
Those don't meet the warrant.
I think the town certainly has discretion to address issues of signage out there. We're prepared to provide signage that is recommended by the town.
Do you mean a do-not-enter sign, where it's one-way, or where is the stop sign that you're talking about?
So, what they, I think the, so, as you come to this turn, right?
This turn that's right on Brush Hill?
Right on Brush Hill.
Yeah.
Right.
You can't go straight.
Cannot go straight.
So, you would want a do-not-enter there. You wouldn't want stop, because stop means you can stop if you go.
We would want to enhance that signage relative to do-not-enter. The, there, but right now, there is a pork, poorly-conditioned sign that has an arrow pointing to the right, it doesn't direct you to slow down, it doesn't tell you what's coming.
Right.
And what it is, is a sharp turn, and so, the woman who owns the house on that corner has lost sections of her fence, she's put up bollards.
Every year, every year.
So, the request relative to stop signs was whether or not to put a stop sign there, and to force people to stop before they made the right. The concern, I think, that was raised by Chase and by John Thompson, at least was expressed to me, was that if you're forced to stop, they lose the right-of-way, in terms of the ability to turn right and merge, sort of through with the traffic that's coming northbound, taking that left to go to Brush Hill. And so, that's an issue to be resolved from a traffic and signage perspective. We're happy to accommodate whatever the outcome of that determination would be.
Okay, so, on the page 23, where you have your mitigation outline, the last bullet point says, "The project proponent working with the town, Mass DOT, and the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization will support and participate in the proposed Route 138 corridor improvement." So, can you explain what you mean by support and participate in?
We've had meetings with them, we've shared information, that's what we've done to date, and we'll continue to do that. And you're asking us to look at their study, which we will do, and see if there's anything that could be pulled out of that, that would be comparable to what we're doing here.
Okay. And.
I think if there was any really short, simple fixes at any of those intersections, that.
It's been done by now.
But we'll take a look at it. And, you know, in fairness, when we talked to the NTO, they were having meetings with the community, and they weren't sharing that information with us at that time, and our, you know, our study was done several months ago.
So, the only other thought I had is, in terms of mitigation, if there's anything on Canton Ave that might enhance bicycle or pedestrian movement and safety?
Certainly charrows, and adding charrows. I think the town has installed sidewalk where there's width to provide it along stretches of Canton Avenue. Not sure that you can do much more. We can look at what else could be done along that stretch to improve pedestrian safety, but the one thing that we think we're doing is, by providing the walking path inside the wall, we're providing a clear, separated path for.
So, you're going to be providing access to the Blue Hills, and so presumably, we want to have people be able to get there, not just by car, right? So, I guess that would be one thing to think about, you know, how they're going to do that.
How can they get there? How can they get to the site now?
Well, that's what, if, if there is something, if you, like, they, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what this can, like, along here, but there are people who do hike, and they come, and they park over here, for example, right? In that lot.
No, I know, I, I mean.
I don't know what the solution is.
The scenic road, right?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, you're never going to get a sidewalk. It's a scenic road.
Well, I don't think they want it.
No, but if there are places you can cross, is all I'm saying. If you're going to be, if, is there anywhere that you can cross, if there's a sidewalk along here, is there any place, you know, that you can get to it? I mean, otherwise, you're going to drive over here to walk on that sidewalk?
Because there's nowhere to park.
It's like, you can't.
Well, I do believe in creating opportunities for sidewalks in the future, even if 20 years from now, it's nice to start setting the path, right? So, because if you don't start somewhere, you'll never have it.
Right. I mean, let's just.
It's for the rest of the country.
Right, so let's just say that the state, you know, does their complete streets on here, right? Then we have our little piece of streets, right? So, are we going to do something so if, you know, eventually, that you can get across and walk along here, and get to over here? I don't know if it's, I don't, can't picture all of the conditions there well enough to know if there's any opportunity or not.
Look, if you ride your bike, you should be able to, straight, you can see.
But then where, you still have to cross over somewhere, right?
I understand, but.
Well, actually, Blue Hill Avenue is going to lead right to Blue Hills.
What's that?
Blue Hill Avenue is going to lead right to Blue Hill. I mean, I'm all for making it more walkable in there, but I think Brian's right.
There's a big parking lot here, and you can walk up the paths into the Blue Hill. We're providing an additional access into the Blue Hill with access through the site to get to it, with parking, but certainly walking access and bicycle access through the site.
That's such an excellent point, that's where you would be focused on.
What's that?
Is the street portion, which is getting you back towards where the parking is on Blue Hill.
Right, in there, right.
I don't think you'll ever saw it for the other direction.
So, you can't, this is, this is why it's one-way, you can't widen this.
That's what I was going to say.
This is, you can't even park there, but people do park there to go on Blue Hills all the time? So, like, Saturday morning in July, forget about it, this is all parked up. But you can't walk, I tried it once, I was doing a sound study, and I was, it was treacherous, you cannot walk that right there. So, I mean.
But that, but you could theoretically improve that a little.
You should, you could do that somehow.
You could improve that jug handle.
But I, I think if you follow what Brian said, that you have to start somewhere, you've put it in somewhere, you've allowed that there is the potential for DCR to create their own sidewalk that would then run on that piece of Canton Ave that's there. Whether, if, if there is no wall, there's still the potential that they could create a flat spot to take and put in a walkway that could then go back and connect to the sidewalk that goes to that parking lot. So.
Okay, so it's a DCR request.
You're giving them, you're doing something that, for the future.
Especially by extending that walkway all the way to here.
Right, right.
And that, that's why we asked them to do that, and it makes sense.
So, I really like the walkway, I think that's a great addition.
Yeah. And while we're, have this plan up, which section didn't have sidewalk that the health department has asked for it to be?
From here, around.
Right, around there, okay. And it was, is it because it's steep in there that it wasn't put in? Because John Thompson says the side, he wants to revise that the sidewalks meet ADA, which means that the slope has to not be too steep.
Yeah, that's, it's really a discussion later with, with respect to the street and the site planning, but there are issues around steepness, and very small, part of the, you know, there's, what, four buildings proposed here, there's another four here, there's this separate eyebrow driveway that we think serves adequately for pedestrian safety, and we think that the volume of traffic that would be coming along in this direction at any given time is so low that it would be safe to walk, if necessary, on the roadway itself. But we can talk about that more specifically when we get to the.
I will point out that I do recall that, was it Quisset Brook, that came to the planning board, asking us amendment to their site plan approval to add sidewalks for the elderly who live in that complex. They did, they were walking on the street previously. Wasn't it Quisset Brook? It's right there at Canton Avenue and Blue Hills Parkway. I think it's Quisset Brook.
Quisset Brook or Home Inc.
Is it Home Inc? That's, it's Home Inc, it's Home Inc, right? That was.
I think so.
What's the attorney's name who?
Bob Sheffield.
Bob Sheffield came in to us, right?
Yep.
They added sidewalks. They wanted to add sidewalks, okay. So, anything else, board members, yes, on traffic?
On page eight.
Okay.
The fatality numbers?
I thought that might be on the wrong row, because they have 62 fatalities, Washington Street, Blue Hill River Road, Royal Street, I mean, it's possible.
That seems like. That seems like...
On which, that's not, that's...
That's a, that's a error. Page eight?
Yep.
I think the fatality were always...
Oh, that, that whole thing's got to slide down, yeah.
Okay.
All the zero, all the zeros going across by the fatalities, thank you.
All right. All right, so Walter, do you have any other comments for us?
Not anything regarding the volumes of that.
Anything on mitigation?
The mitigation, I think you could actually look for, the speeds obviously are a concern with the 85th percentile at 43, 41 miles an hour. If you did a speed study today and set the speed limit, you would actually set it for about 45.
Wow.
So, you definitely want to kind of look at that.
Can you say that again? If you set...
When you do a speed study to do a speed limit on a road, it's actually set by the 85th percentile.
Cool.
So, that's going with people drive the road at which they're comfortable. So if you're comfortable going at that speed, then you would drive that speed. That's why it's very hard in... It's very hard in...
I'm concerned while going 90.
It's very hard in residential areas that are wide and straight streets to keep the speeds low because people are comfortable going faster.
It's why the interstate highway people don't drive 55. They drive 70 because that's the speed they...
Well, they can come off of it.
You say they set the speed limit. They're not, they're not setting the speed limit based on what you feel comfortable doing.
This is not. So if you ask for a speed study to set the speed limit, it would be set at higher.
So does, does that mean that it would be difficult to lower the speed in that area? Because that's...
If you wanted to lower it, which you can't because it's not meeting the dense grid.
Well, it's 30 at least, but they're going 13 miles over it.
So what I'm saying is you don't want to do a speed study to set speed limit.
Oh, right. Because it'll go up.
So Rich, the, what happens and if you, people do it, and we think, one of the reasons why we think these radar signs are good is that this, when you get just beyond the proposed site driveway, you start downhill. And you start downhill and it winds. And people just, without even knowing it, you're going 40 to 45 in a 30.
Yeah, I've had people right up behind me.
Yeah, me too.
And they go around.
And it happens, you know, and I live at the far end of Canton Ave. When I take a right to head down the hill towards Glover School, it's the same thing. It's a downhill thing. And they put one of those in and it catches me once a week anyway. But it's, it's there and it grabs you. And so, putting some of those in along that long downhill stretch all the way to Unquity will, will get people's attention, make it safer, slow them down. That's really what we were getting at when we were proposing those elements.
So Walter, do you think that will do it? Or is there any other mitigating factor or measure that you would suggest might help with speed reduction?
Other than the signs, there's really not anything that I'm aware of right now. It's not a candidate for speed bumps or anything like that. You wouldn't want to do that. The road already is a windy road. When you get past this and past Carberry and you get by the Bartol Farm area, it's very windy. The sightlines in that area are a lot tighter. So you really can't do much more than the signage.
And what about, like, I don't think there's any crosswalks along this whole length, right? Would, are, are crosswalks helpful in reducing speed, do you think?
I, I don't think crosswalks in this area would be advisable because I think it would give the pedestrian a false safe security.
I agree with that.
Because the people are coming down and it's not a road that you're expecting to see crosswalks since there's no sidewalks, nothing like that. So putting that crosswalk in, I would advise it.
Plus, there's no, there's no corresponding stop sign.
Crosswalk to where?
Right.
There's some stop signs being proposed, so I'm wondering if...
No, those two stop signs are being proposed because they don't exist at the bottom of, at the top of Hemlock and the bottom of Carberry Lane.
They're on roads approaching Canton.
They were just proposing to put stop signs in, but that's not, but they don't, those, those roads aren't lined up across from each other. And the other thing is, at least our conversations with, with, with John Thompson and Chase, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that stop signs along that stretch are artificial. People will speed up to catch up for the time that they lose when they have to stop, when they don't expect to have to stop. And so, sometimes they make matters worse as opposed to better relative to slowing people down along this type of a, of a stretch of road.
Yeah, but you come down some, to some fairly dense and houses close to the street pretty quickly. So it's pretty unsafe when you kind of get there. I, I mean, I, I don't know. Maybe there's no measure.
Once you get past Woodland Road, you start tightening up and you're on that downhill. And they have a radar sign now at the bottom of that one, right by the ledge way.
I mean, given that there's a painted bicycle on the street, is there anything to help with warning drivers that that's, it's a shared road with bicycles?
You could put some shared road bicycle signs up. So you have two ways of notifying traffic with that. But without the right of way, not being able to stripe a bicycle path, there's not much more you can do.
We're, we're a designated bicycle-friendly community. So if there's anything that we can do, it may not be the ideal. But whatever we can do, I think would...
But I know the gentleman here is from the Bike Committee over there. And I think he would say the same. He probably, this road would only give you the opportunity to put your...
The other thing is, I mean, I, again, I've ridden on Canton Ave. And it, because it's narrow and there's, in some places, our storm drain caps or whatever are low and you have a big bump and you don't want to go too far left because now you're in the middle of the lane. And it's, you know, there, I don't know the situation at this end, but if there's any way to improve what that shoulder's like along there so that it's a...
This is a scenic road. You've got to remember, this is a scenic, you can't touch the, you're going to have a hard time putting some of these signs up.
That's what I was thinking too.
Well, we approved the scenic road applications, right? So who's...
I understand, but you're going, but you're going to have people at those hearings upset. So, one of the other problems too, though, is as you're coming down 138, it's a fast road, obviously. And to take that turn on Canton Ave. is not even really a turn. It's just a, so you're sliding right into a fast thing. So, I guess what, somebody was talking earlier about doing some work there. The only thing you want to be careful of is, the only reason to slow down now is it looks kind of narrow as you're entering it.
Yeah.
And if you clear it up a little, it might feel like you just keep flying right through.
Yeah.
So you've got to do something to slow people down there. Like, like if it was a turn, you're going to slow down, slow down way down to make the turn. But because it's just a...
Right. You can come flying down around the corner.
It's like a deer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a little... No, agreed. And that's, that's really part of, I think, what this study is taking a look at that intersection too.
That intersection that you're talking about, up to about 15 years ago, was actually wider.
It's really very interesting.
They actually net that down.
To slow people down?
Really understandable.
Oh, good.
If you read through it. Wait, I want to see that. Again, just because I experienced Canton Ave. and I do ride my bike on it. And I have in the past tried to take my children out on bike rides. I had, to get to a road that is striped for a bike, I have to go on Canton Ave. So whatever we can do to help on Canton Ave, if the, if this, I understand it's a scenic road, but if it's a rough edge to that versus a cleaner edge so that the bike going along, it can share it better with the car, it's a safer, it is a safety improvement. It's not significant, but it's a small safety improvement. So, um, again, I don't know. We've asked in, in some instances, like their nursery special permit, that they have to look at the shoulder and improve the shoulder if it gets damaged by trucks, right? So I don't see why the shoulder's off limits here along this stretch in front of them. I think that's scenic road over there too. No?
I don't know. I think we'll, scenic, yeah, it's a whole district, but, I mean, they, these guys were also giving us one of the only sidewalks on a scenic road in the town.
But you're not going to ride your bike on that.
You could.
Not a road bike.
It's not going to be a paved sidewalk, right?
It'll be substantial. It has to be handicapped accessible. It'll be pervious, but it will be substantial.
So just one comment about the shoulder. I would not want to see them improve the shoulder for bike safety if it meant taking away the screening for the development. Because I think that's part of, the natural screening that we want them to preserve there.
Yeah. No, I think it's just the condition of the edge of the road that I'm talking about.
I think you want to avoid the opportunity for people to walk between the stone wall and the edge of the pavement. Because it's only a couple of feet. It's not safe. Given the speeds that people are, I mean, out there, you don't want them there. You want them inside the property where it's safe.
All right, I'm going to go ride my bike.
I, I've not...
Cold as it is, be sometime between now and our next meeting. Yes.
Maybe I should already know this if they already did it, but did, has the Bike Committee or have they made any recommendations on this or weighed in on, because I know he's here. Has he?
Lee, have you folks considered Canton Ave. out of this end of Canton Ave. In terms of bicycle use and improvement?
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Come forward, Lee. And then after Lee, I think we have a...
Be mindful of time here.
Yeah, definitely have to leave this.
Thank you. Lee Toma, 58 Aberdeen Road, resident and member of the Bike Committee. I had intended to make a few comments here and appreciate the opportunity, so thank you. Obviously Canton Ave. isn't exactly a friendly place to go biking as you're familiar with. But there are constraints because it's, you can only do so much with it. But I, I do think that Mr. Dolly has done a nice job and his team have done a nice job of including the side path there, which is more family-friendly. I think there are a couple of different populations of people who go biking. So for example, the more advanced cyclists, they'll, they'll take Canton Ave regardless. But the more family-oriented type people, maybe with your children, other families like that, they would probably use the side, side path that was, that's proposed here on the inside of the, the stone wall. And I think there are places where those are very popular and commonly used. So for example, if you go out to Concord and Lincoln, they have some nice conservation areas there. And they have basically the same kind of thing where they've got this multi-use path that's protected from traffic on the inside of the stone wall. And it's a, it's a very popular, I guess, amenity in those areas. So I do commend the team for including that in their, in their design.
Lee, excuse me for one second. Do you know how wide the shared path is in Concord?
Oh, I don't know. I'd guess it's probably eight feet or so. I, I don't really know. I usually ride on a road when I'm there, but, but I do see families there.
Which one? I live in Concord.
Lee, you referenced a shared...
So I think in, in, might be Lincoln, Codman Road?
Sorry, I said Concord.
Yeah, so... But, but I think that this, this design includes that, that type of element and I think that's a good thing.
Okay.
Speaking about, people have mentioned the, the lower end of Canton Ave. There's two lanes where people come flying off of Route 138, as you mentioned, and I did it myself this evening. Maybe not as fast as some other people. But, but, but I do suggest that in the future, the town might consider increasing that curb bump out there at that corner to discourage people from taking that so fast. Maybe kind of putting in, I don't know what you call it, a chicane kind of thing where, where you have to slow down to go around. And I don't think you really need to have two lanes there for that one block. I think that encourages more speeding. Maybe you could cut that down to one lane and put in a shared use path for that section. And maybe that could connect to this path. So I think that's a start in, in moving forward for Mike, more pedestrian and bike-friendly Canton Ave. So maybe some thoughts for that.
So, Lee, would you be willing to send us an email with those comments?
Sure.
That we can put in the file?
Yep.
Great.
I've got more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. Please keep going.
Not a lot more, though. I'd like to suggest that at the, at the driveway where the, the development enters into Canton Ave, there may be a stop sign and a watch for bicycles sign. So I was trying to look up some information here. Obviously, there aren't very many places for people to go biking because the Blue Hills is, there's only a few roads that pass through the Blue Hills and, and this is one of the more popular ones. I was looking at some numbers online and top speeds for bicyclists there are in the 33 mile an hour range. Surprise.
Wow.
So obviously, older people like myself or families might be going maybe 10, 15 miles an hour. But, but I think that a lot of drivers have a tendency to underestimate the speed of bicyclists. I think it would be helpful to have signage there saying, as you get to the entrance to Canton Ave, saying, "Watch for bicyclists." So I know there are many cases where I've been out and people driving, they're looking for cars. They don't really look for bicyclists. So I've had a lot of close calls that way.
The downhill approach for the new driveway as you approach Canton Ave, that there would be a sign saying, "Watch for bicyclists" before you, as you approach it?
Yeah, okay. So I think that might be one helpful thing. As I mentioned, a lot of people do use Canton Ave. for bicycling because obviously the Blue Hills is a great place to go out for recreation. And a lot of people use that one big loop, Canton Ave. Unquity Road, as a training route. And people do multiple laps of that. It's a, it's a very popular route. So whatever we can do to help improve safety would be, would be helpful there. And I don't know how much signage you can put up on Canton Ave. I think the radar signs are helpful, but perhaps there could be like intersection ahead sign warning that it's not just a regular driveway.
We did propose, at Mary Noble's request, we did add a blind drive ahead sign as you approached the skewed intersection with the Bartol Estate. Probably a couple of other discreet locations, appropriate locations we could think about. Similar signs as well.
So I think that sums up what I, what I wanted to add. I also support the idea of having the sidewalk on the, the loop road there because if I lived there, I'd want to go for walking laps around the community. I think that'd be helpful. I think it would be an interest for including public access to the Blue Hills too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
All right, mindful of time. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come before the board to talk about the topics that we've been discussing here tonight? So either the staff report or the traffic. All right, so Jack, would you like to, parting comments before we close this part for tonight?
Yes, please. Per the schedule that was circulated earlier, on the 10th of January, the topic is affordable housing. And then there's a ULI note. I don't know what that is.
Well, because we, we will have probably less time available for lengthy topic because we have that on our agenda on the 10th.
I see, okay.
And that's why it's referenced here.
All right, so I was going to propose, and maybe this is not a good propose, I was going to propose that we come back with the additional traffic data, thoughts, mitigation, so on and so forth on that night. But if that's not the right night...
Well, let's put, I think that's fine. We can put it there.
I feel like we're not going to get to it.
Not going to get to it. No? Okay.
Okay.
Consider that the ULI tap is going to start because some of us at 8 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
It's going to run all day.
I didn't know what it was. I...
Okay.
They're going to, the people who are presenting it are going to come up with a draft report that they will present to this board.
All right, excuse me.
I know, just before the meeting.
We got it, Phil.
Guess I touched the third rail.
So I would say the 10th is, I mean, the third is not going to be a good time either. I have a feeling that's going to take two meetings, to be honest with you, the site plan and the architectural and the historical.
You're going to have those three in one night, do you?
Yes, we do right now. So we're going to have to split those.
We all agreed to it last time, so...
No, I said you could tack on affordable housing, not, not architect... Wait a minute.
Architecture and historic preservation.
And historic preservation.
That was, we all agreed that that was the right time.
Okay. Okay, okay.
I'm, I'm just concerned that that might take more than one night? We can start them all at the same time?
We'll be prepared to do it on the 24th, or, or thereafter.
Yeah, I think the 24th.
I think of architecture and historic preservation.
That's all we want, I...
Okay. We can see what else the...
Or we can table it, but...
I know the 13th, we're likely to have at least 333 Brushell Road on the agenda. I don't know yet what else, but...
Yeah, we're not ready by the 13th. I mean, you've asked us to do a bunch of different things, and I think it was a good, robust conversation, and a respectful conversation for us to respond in a rational, reasonable, and respectful way.
I was just trying to suggest if there's anything else we want to try and think of for the 13th, but I think it's fine.
It'll be okay if we get to go home a little early sometime.
Okay, so, otherwise, you're fine with the schedule. So, you'll let your team know?
Can we earmark it for the 24th, and as we go through the other meetings? If, because we're on TV, and there's public in the room, and so on and so forth, if we need to punt it down the road, we'll do so. Just so that at least we have a placeholder in our... Fair enough?
I'm just gonna...
Thank you.
Wrap up with what I think our takeaways are.
Okay.
Tonight, just so we make sure we're, we're gonna extend the traffic study to look at the Uncity Road intersection. I'm gonna review the state's report relative to particularly the Blue Hill Avenue, Canton Avenue, Brushell Road intersection. Look at additional opportunities for mitigation along the corridor of Canton Avenue. Is there any...
Other than, are you going to commit to the sidewalk, extension of the sidewalk?
Yes, we're committing to the extension of the sidewalk inside the, the property. Yeah.
Okay. At Canton Avenue, what we're talking about right now. So, what we're, what I guess is this part, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because we haven't really yet discussed up here. What we're talking about right now is out there. Okay. Okay, so, I think that's right. Did anybody seem, think that they missed anything in that recap?
We're talking about it.
Okay. We do want to talk about zoning before we have to adjourn here, so...
Yeah, but we need an application. I mean, has anybody gotten, seen an application for this A and R?
I think it came to us before, but I don't know where. I don't have it with me.
What's the application?
Do you have an A and R application?
I know that they can send it out. It should be in the drop box.
If it got sent out, then we have a timing issue. It'll be approved de facto April.
I don't...
Even if it didn't get sent out, if it got filed and accepted, then we have a timing issue.
Other, other questions, Matt?
I just wanna see it, I wanna make sure you have one.
You need to walk me through what you're talking about.
What I understand is that they're creating that little sliver lot, Lot C, so that that can be conveyed to the buyer of Lot A.
So, this little thing, to be added to this?
But there's drawings.
One hand open.
Yeah, it's a catwalk.
Oh, thank you, Walter. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's not the, it's not a PDM.
So, the concern I have...
What the A and R is doing is, I understand, you've already approved the A and R for lot B.
Right.
Right.
There was a desire between the parties to purchase additional area, so they've agreed to create this lot, this little sliver lot, to be sold. And that's the purpose of this A and R. It's an additional lot. It's not buildable on its own, because it doesn't have frontage, it doesn't have the required land area, but can be combined with Lot B.
So, Lot C has been, Lot C was, we, Lot C and Lot, and parcel N123B were never connected, right? Not recently, anyway.
Until very recently.
The whole thing was one lot?
This was all one.
Why did we approve, why did we allow them to create this crazy lot that doesn't...
Because it was going to be this, these folks are Cashman.
I know it's not buildable, but I don't, I just, I mean, you're not supposed to have an A and R plan unless it has access.
No, no, you can, you can have an A and R plan.
I know that does, I know that does.
But you can also have an A and R plan that identifies piece of property as not buildable lots. Because that means that they can't go get a building permit to build on it as a separate lot. It can only be used in combination with other lots. And in this case, it's being used in combination with Cashman's other property that fronts on Parkway Drive. You can always, you can always divide off a piece of property, so that the piece that's divided off is a buildable lot.
I understand.
Right? And you can have remainder land that remains with, connected to other property.
I agree. I agree with everything you just said. This land currently is in, we basically created a non-buildable lot.
Yeah.
I don't know how we did that.
Easy. You approved the A and R.
Yeah, I, I... Not sure we should've.
And there's no reason why you shouldn't have.
Well, I don't agree with that, because it says right in the handbook, that it, that first qualification, the lot shown on such plan must front on one of three types of ways. The first...
Yes, in order for it to be a buildable lot.
In order for it to be...
A buildable lot. You can, you can have non-buildable lots that are remainder. You just can't build on them.
I understand you can't, but I understand that that's possible.
So...
You could potentially take and say that it must stay with 55 Parkway. Remaining land must stay.
Let me read you something from the handbook that the planning board has handed when they get elected, in order to make decisions about A and Rs. It says, basically, "The court has interpreted the subdivision control law to impose three standards that must be met in order for lots shown on a plan to be entitled to an endorsement by the planning board that approval under the subdivision control law is not required. Number one, the lots shown, lots shown on such plan must front on one of three types of ways. Two, they must all meet the minimum frontage. And three, is we can, we can, we have to determine that there's vital access to lots is met." So, I don't think we met that. Fine, we approved the lot, we probably shouldn't have, but it's happened. I'm not sure I'm prepared to do it again. So, I'd like John Flynn to weigh in on this, but we don't, I don't know if we have the time.
Wait a minute, we wouldn't be, right? We would just be, this would have the frontage.
No, you have to create this lot, they're asking us to create this funky little lot now, and then they'll buy it.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
When's your closing?
I don't know. I don't represent them in the purchase.
So, this is something before us, so, Bill, you must think this is legal and acceptable. What does your review say?
I, I think that what we did is we created the A and R lot, which does have the frontage. The remaining piece of land is owned by Mr. Cashman, and it's contiguous to his land. So, it's just an additional piece of land for him.
Who's Cashman A?
It is Land Court land.
He's on the other side of the wall. He's the owner of that land.
He's a, um, Land Court land, so it has to go, no matter what we say, it still has to go to Land Court.
So, he owns both of these. He's Cashman, this guy owns...
So, why does he want this?
He doesn't.
Oh, 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 I see.
He wants to, he owns all of this. He's selling this and this.
Do you get that? Cashman owns this, and this, and this, and he wants to sell this.
So, Brian, as an example, you approved a subdivision plan for 1065 Brushell Road that has three lots.
I didn't, but anyway, go ahead. I voted against it.
Two of which have frontage and land, and appropriate land area, so each one is separately buildable. There's a third lot, there was an L-shaped lot, that only had, that had frontage on a private way, but it didn't have the adequate land area. It's still a non-buildable lot, it can be sold to the, the next door, property owner.
And that was done in the subdivision, right? Is that what you just said?
It was done as part of the subdivision, it could have been done as part of an A and R plan. The separate issue on the subdivision, in that case, was the improvements or not to the roadways, and...
I mean, look, on Milton precedent, I agree. We've often approved lots where we wrote "not a buildable lot." I'm just not sure that that's what the handbook says, so...
Well, given that we already created this lot, and this is just changing the sizes of these two lots. Your question, I think, is really back to the decision we already made, more so than to this one. Because this is such a tiny piece, it's obvious it's just to combine it. Bill?
Can I offer a potential solution? Take the vote contingent upon Mr. Flynn's agreement, at which point I can sign for the board.
And can we say "non-buildable"?
Non-buildable is set on those...
I was not here during any of that, so I don't...
Lots, Lot C...
Yeah, but I don't...
I'm just explaining to you, Lot C, it says "a portion of N123A, not a buildable." Exactly says no buildable lot.
No, a buildable lot.
Not a buildable lot. It does say that.
The correct language is on here, I agree with that.
I will say in my three and a half years here, that we have done this sort of thing, where it allows you to take a piece of it and put, combine it with another parcel. And it's done for different reasons, but I've seen this done.
Yeah, so that I would understand, that's what I thought this was. This is not combining it, though, this is creating a whole separate...
So, considering we're taking...
So, they can sell it to this one, and it'll be one.
So, considering we're taking a non-buildable lot that we've already created, and changing it, I'm fine with it.
Lot line, yeah. I don't, I don't object here.
I'm fine with it. I would like, so I'm fine with it. I would like an interpretation from Mr. Flynn, going forward, as to whether we've been doing the correct thing in the past.
So, you don't want to make a contingent then, now?
I don't think we need to, because to your point, we're, we're changing a currently non-buildable lot, we're just moving a lot line to, into a buildable lot. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But I would like some...
I would recommend further that he evaluate that guidance, and correct the guidance, because the guidance that you've gotten is incorrect, as I understand the law.
So, that's exactly why I want clarification, because if our lawyer tells us this handbook needs to be corrected, let's make sure the board knows that.
So, Bill, will you reach out to John?
Yep.
All right, so then...
I would move that we endorse this plan as not requiring approval under the subdivision by law.
Do I have a second?
And, and I would, I would, I'm sorry, I'm gonna amend my motion to allow Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not applying, acquiring approval under the subdivision control on our, on the planning board's behalf.
Do I have a second?
I would ask one question. The earlier plan that you approved, did the entire board sign that plan?
No.
No, so, Land Court accepted.
We never signed them.
The Land Court accepted as, signed by...
Yes.
It's signed by...
Signed by the board. The plan or half of the board.
I'm gonna second my motion.
All right, so, we have a motion, we have a second.
Guys, talk to me into it.
Any further discussion? Rich, any, any other questions?
No, I'm, I'm good with that.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, unanimous? Did I see?
Yeah.
Okay. So, lastly, zoning.
We didn't even get to...
I think, I can do this if you want, because we can make these two changes, or I'm gonna make these two proposals very quickly. Do you have the ability to bring up that language that Lauren sent me on the screen, on the traffic? While Mr. Clark is doing that, can we, do we want to contemplate a change to the, create a state's bylaw to reflect that the 550-foot rule would apply only to the street that there's front, that we have front, that you obtain your frontage from? So, I got a question, I think I'm for that, I just would like to know from folks that we were involved in that. Did we hear anything from those abouters? Like, did they have issue? Like, was that property always going to be there, and this is an oversight? Yeah. My opinion is that, yes, this was a highly negotiated site plan that involved that neighborhood, and they brought representatives from the neighborhood to endorse the plan. Right. So, my recommendation, right, my opinion is that, yes, the neighborhood would not object to this. Having said that, they will have an opportunity at a public hearing to come and say no. Yeah, I just wanted to hear that before we had that hearing.
Yeah, I mean, my opinion is that the intent was always off Canton.
Okay, I agree.
In fact, there was, there was a series of emails that came from the neighborhood, through the former chair, to us.
What do you mean?
Specifically to that issue during, during...
Okay, it makes sense to me.
Send it, and I'll get it.
And it makes sense to me, again, having been a participant in the drafting of that zoning on the board, there wasn't discussion of that applying to every lane. So, Brian, we have that hard copy of that zoning here, if we want to start with that one.
If you have the hard copy, that will just be...
No, I don't have the traffic one, I have the...
I need a proposal.
No, I'll do it, I'll do it.
All right, so, I'll get to the page, which is...
Are you okay with this?
Yeah, I mean, the intention was Canton Avenue.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah, and I think this is...
It would have been great if the developer would have been fine with the other, but the developer was never fine with the other. Oh, here it is, right here.
Well, and again, I think we're, I'm just trying to resolve a potential issue.
If, if the people come and show up at the public hearing and, and say, "We don't agree with this," then I think I would probably change my position.
Right, right.
Right. Where, sorry, where am I? Oh, 550, 550, 550. So, in Section D, "New townhouse units shall not be constructed less than 550 feet from an existing street, comma, provided that," and then it goes on. My proposal would be that this language would now read, "New townhouse units shall not be constructed less than 550 feet from the street the project fronts, or the street the project runs onto."
How about the street that provides frontage for the project?
That provides frontage for the project, just fine. From the street that provides frontage for the project. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Does that take care of it? It eliminates carberry from, for sure.
Yeah. We'll give that to Bill, or Julia. Julia? So, any further discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor?
I can just...
Aye.
Aye. Aye, unanimous? Okay.
Okay, the second issue deals with, um, safety traffic bylaw that we just passed as part of our town meeting deliberations. There was a concern that we were being far too narrow. We currently limit the application of that new traffic bylaw to just PUDs and overlay districts, and I think rightfully so. We, we thought that we should start small, because that's historically how, was, we've been able to get improved, and town meeting basically said, "Why are you limiting this so much?" So, my...
Well, and also, I mean, we did ask about it, and town council advised that it would be out of scope to add it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, at the meeting, I agree at the meeting, right.
Yeah.
So, my...
And even prior to, once it was submitted.
Once it was submitted, yeah.
We couldn't do anything.
So, my proposal is actually to change the language to, to strike where it says "PUD and overlay district," and just replace it so that it says, "In a business district or a residential district," which basically is the entire town, and then it has all the regular governors on it that it had prior. So, it basically opens the entire town up to this potential bylaw, which gives the planning board discretion to impose this traffic mitigation measure.
And the discretion to waive it if we submit.
And the discretion to waive it.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Brian, did you, did you check with MAPC?
Forgot.[1634.82] So we'll have to do that prior to the town, the, the public hearing.
And what we're voting on right now is just language to submit to the select for consideration. So I'm in favor of what you just said.
Submitting it for the annual town meeting.
If there is a special town meeting, we'll, we'll submit it for that. But if not, the annual.
The next possible.
Next possible meeting.
There was also something in the language that said 60 cars or something that has an impact.
Should we reduce that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, remind me.
The 60-car impact?
Do you have it up there, Bill?
No, we never, couldn't find it.
It's locked me up.
The other thing was, there was a couple of words that were like efact instead of afact, or there was like a couple funky...
We can change that.
Can we change that?
That's not out of, I thought we did change that, but if we miss something, we can change that.
Okay.
Should we think about the 60-car impact?
So what was, in the terms of a project with 60...
The trigger. What the triggers were.
Yeah, based on what we're hearing tonight, it should probably be 20.
And it had to be a C, like rated C.
12.
Had to be rated C.
Tonight it would be 6.
Four.
Level.
C is, you know, C and D, according to the beta engineer, were acceptable.
Yeah, yeah.
So E and F were not.
But I think that's what you said, right?
Yeah, we can't get, I, I think asking people to get to a B is pretty tough.
No, but I think that we could eliminate the car impact and keep it if you're going to change the rating.
I thought it was a trigger was the cars, not...
Well, what I'm saying is a trigger could be that this, the intersection is going to be downgraded from whatever to whatever.
As well. You just can't downgrade it. That's the rules, you cannot downgrade.
But it sounded like this one wasn't going to affect it.
Yeah, like a 54-unit thing wasn't going to affect it. Isn't that something?
But then somehow it was having this huge downgrade, which I didn't quite understand in the build analysis, it went to F.
But that's what else is being built, that's the other part you have to look at.
But it said, "There's no other project."
Oh, okay. You did read that, okay.
I did. And the only thing is they assigned a very minimal percentage increase. I mean, like 1% or something like that per year.
You can't make it by the amount of cars that are on the property, can you?
There's no way that the number of cars would drop it two levels. That's why I said something's...
So if you take out the car number as the trigger and you leave it to the planning board discretion...
It's one is triggered is what that is. The planning board, I don't think we could leave it to discretion as to when we would apply it or not because that could be deemed like we're, yeah, like we're being subjective.
But should we think about changing 60?
I'm fine, I'm fine with changing 60.
Sounds like we should.
I mean, based on what we saw tonight, the impact can be as low as 30 cars.
Well, that's what I mean.
Although that's not, this project, if you read the traffic report...
It's like 12.
No, it's way more than 30. No, it's way more than 30.
There's like 350 trips.
It's 350 some, it's 350 trips. And I think it was trips.
Oh, I see, okay.
It was trips. It was daily trips that I used.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not peak hour. Maybe I did use the peak hour, so that's what we would want to look at.
Yeah. Can we change that later or can we give you the authority to, can we give you the authority to make the suggested change?
I probably have it on here.
And then we'll discuss it at the here?
Hold on. I can look at it on my phone.
I vaguely remember 60 trips. I don't know why I remember that. But it seemed high at the time and I said, "Oh, jeez."
All right, while they're, while Brian's looking for that, I just...
And we got to do the sign by law. That's on John Flynn's plate. The, sorry to interrupt.
No, that's okay, except that, just again, for annual town meeting, we're talking January that articles have to get submitted.
So let's give, can we put a bug in John Flynn's ear about the sign by law?
January 5th.
January 5th. Early January.
Can we check in with John Flynn and learn how to use the sign by law?
We have two meetings before they have to end.
Because Denny's right, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
We did leave that with him.
If we've been trying to do this since I came on, it's been almost two years.
All right, so the other thing I was going to mention, no, I guess it's on our agenda, so I can't, never mind.
Oh, you can't?
No, I don't think so.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we make, why don't I make, can we make it as two separate motions? So the first motion is that we strike the, the language that, that cites the overlay district and PUD and changes that to be in a residential or commercial district.
And that would be subject to confirmation that the...
If it doesn't work, we'll withdraw it.
Okay, that's fine. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I, I think that's a good change. I wonder if we should, was it Peter Mullen had some suggestions? Would it be good to, I don't know if we can at this time, but maybe next time.
He should be able to tweak it as long as we make it broad enough. That's why I'm actually making it this broad, is so that we can reduce the scope if we need to.
He just had a couple of other suggestions, would now be a good time to implement those because, I mean, one thing he said is what, what you want to have happen, this by law doesn't make happen. So he may have had a couple of things.
This would change that.
Well, this would make it broad.
This will make it work.
This would make it broad, but I think there was like...
The second one also would, if you're changing the, a trigger from 60 trips down to 20 trips or something like that, that would do it too, I think, because now...
Well, I'm going to make that as the second motion. I'm going to fix that. I'm going to change it to average, I'm going to change it to daily trips instead of peak hour trips if we need to.
All right, so...
60, 60 daily trips as opposed to 60 peak hour trips is what my, what my next change is going to be.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Do we, just, then not saying that there wouldn't potentially be other things. It's not being submitted yet because we don't know if there's going to be a February meeting. So if there's no February meeting, we can modify it again before we get to submitting it January 5th for the annual town meeting. In other words, we could try and pick up this other...
Because I would like to have, I would like to go over it because I do think that the, I felt like it was rushed last time and it could be improved to do what you want it to do in a more streamlined fashion. But I can't do it on the fly, so I understand if you all want to vote for it and I'll...
So I don't disagree with you, but I also, if we can broaden it in the short term, if we have a February meeting, I prefer to do that. And then we could still talk about it again maybe at the next meeting in case we don't have a February meeting and we want to review the comments from last time for the spring town meeting? Or both. I mean, we could do both.
We could do...
But I'm just thinking that if somebody applies, Denny?
Yeah.
And we have a chance to capture them, I'd rather do that.
I don't want to wait.
So I agree because like if we didn't even do it last time, we would be talking about explaining it at this point in the next meeting. The fact that we got it through, now we're making incremental changes. I, I like the idea of making incremental changes.
If someone files an application in East Milton right now, we can't apply this.
Right.
And I totally agree with you because I do recall Peter had some good suggestions. I don't remember who they are.
I know.
I also think there was substantial changes.
And it's sort of catching us off guard tonight, but I'm willing to do both paths if you are.
I'm willing to do both if, as long as we're going to keep going.
I'm very open to just continuing to evolve it. I have a problem with that.
I am too, but I also think there was...
And I'll watch the tapes and everything else of town meeting to figure out where the modifications have to be made. This specific change is allowing us to hopefully capture stuff that comes in between now and next October.
This is something the board identified wanting to do as we talked about, and we couldn't.